Cell phones and electronic devices. Ms. Wagner, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton, present.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions that you might have. I want to share two things before we move into the approval of the minutes. The first was I recently learned Blue Jeans has some nice accessibility features around transcriptions and also for language translation. And people who use those services probably know that already, but I wanted to share that with the public because I thought that was a nice feature around public accessibility. And then before we move into the approval of minutes, I wanted to highlight a new piece of the agenda, which says here the six-week board priorities. And I'm sharing these here because we met as a board in our work session the Saturday before last and talked about, you know, what are the small number of most important things this board wants to make sure happens at the board level over these next six weeks. And so you can see these here. We're going to talk about them later during Board Matters. But we'll see a commitment on the superintendent search to announcing three or fewer finalists by February 10th with a description of how the community will be involved in interviewing those finalists. I didn't preview this with anybody, but would any board member mind reading the second one?
For COVID, we are going to do Schools Are Open for In-Person Learning on 1/24. And in partnership with the administration, we continue a school-by-school approach to any future virtual and in-person needs this school year.
I think the communication item is still in the works. We'll probably may come back to that in the future or during Board Matters, Board Matters. But for new board members, is there a board member who wanted to read that one? The fourth one listed for the board priorities for around new board members. Is anybody willing to read that one? Good, Mr. Craig?
So it's new board, all new board members feel like they have ways of getting their most important questions answered that they are, that are working for them.
And then the last one, number five, was around board development. Is there anybody who wants to read that one? Ms. Morosky?
Board development, we identify some form of ongoing board governance training that the majority of the board believes will be helpful.
Great. And so we'll keep moving here, but I wanted to report back to the public for those who weren't able to watch the Saturday work session that we're committing to some priorities, and we're going to make sure they happen. Ms. Weinberg?
I just wanted to add in the communication aspect. We are, it's still under construction, but we came up with some ideas of just making sure that we're properly communicating and being very transparent about the superintendent search.
All right. Thank you very much. So we're moving on now to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from a whole series of things. The tech budget hearing for January 3rd, the organizational meeting from January 3rd, the special meeting January 10th, the business meeting January 10th, the business meeting work session January 15th, and the special meeting January 19th.
No moves.
Second?
The first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Committee reports, I think these happen to be short. I usually will try to keep them to five minutes, but these may be five seconds. So Ms. Weinberg is chair of the Health and Safety Committee. Would you like to present those minutes?
Yes, thank you. So the Health and Safety Committee met on Monday, January the 10th at 5:00 p.m. here at the Cincinnati Public Schools Education Center. We immediately started our meeting. I was able to be elected as the chair of this committee, and I gladly accepted, and I look forward to it. We also have Dr. Kareem and also Carolyn Joan, who sits on the committee, along with some administration and staff. We also, at this meeting, we have the approval of the 2022 meeting schedule, in which we are meeting the last Monday of the board meeting of each month at 4:00 p.m. And we provided steps for our next meeting to be held on January 31st at 4:00 p.m. And to kind of just end our next steps, our action steps are, we're asking the board staff will provide the committee with the 2021 Health and Safety Committee minutes and the 2021 committee work plan. And the meeting was adjourned at 5:19 p.m.
Do board members have any questions? Hearing none, Vice President, thank you, Ms. Weinberg. And Vice President Jones, would you present the minutes for the Student Achievement Committee?
Yes, thank you. The Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee met on Wednesday, January 12th at 11 o'clock in the Launch Ed Room 110. Attending that meeting were the members of that committee, and they include Brandon Craig, Ms. Weinberg, and myself. Board member Moffett, Dr. Moffett did attend, as did administration. Dr. Brown and Shawna Murphy, who are the representatives to that committee. We spent time electing our committee chair, that person being moi. And we approved our 2022 meeting schedule, as noted in the minutes. The other business just included receiving the minutes from the entire year of '21 so that we can reference and be prepared for our next meeting, where we will review the committee work plan from '21. And we will have a presentation by administration on high school seals and then address any items of importance as they come forward on the agenda. So the committee will receive an update on the work plan during that meeting, and we are preparing to submit a final work plan for approval to the board in March of 2022.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Do board members have any questions? Hearing none, I need a motion to accept the committee reports.
No move.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The committee reports are approved as presented. Moving on to announcements, does anyone have any kudos that they would like to share? Ms. Weinberg?
Yes, I actually have a couple of kudos. I'm going to first start off with personally giving a huge shout out to the principals who welcomed myself and board member Dr. K into their buildings last week. It was so nice to see the remote learning in action and to also get a chance to further educate ourselves and the good thing, about the good things that our CPS schools are doing. I just wanted to give a huge shout out to Principal Chambers at Walnut Hills High School, Principal Waggad at Taff High School, Principal Simmons at Parker Woods Montessori, Principal Sipple at Fairview German, and Principal Zoller at Cairns, better known as the Clifton Area Neighborhood School. So I know that I look forward to fulfilling my charge of visiting all 65 schools over the next couple of months, and I just want to thank everyone for being so welcoming. My next kudos is I just want to give a huge shout out to the talent acquisition and staffing for working very hard as we are trying to get our subs and getting people into the building. Thank you for all of your hard work. And last but not least, a huge shout out to all of our CPS teachers, our principals, paras, staff, and of course, Ms. Amott and her team for working hard during our two weeks of remote learning and ensuring that our students were learning and safely preparing for them to be back into the building this week. You all are truly appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. Do we have other kudos? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I do have a kudo. I have a kudo to folks that we don't often congratulate and thank enough, and that is one of our great partners. We have an extensive list of partners to our district. And one of our partners this weekend was able to do something that nobody's been able to do for 30-some years, which is get into the playoffs. So I want to congratulate one of our great partners, who has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, thousands of hours of time, and helped us in any way possible with facilities and with students and rewarding students for outstanding efforts, and that is the Cincinnati Bengals. Thank you, partner Bengals.
Just for the record, getting into the playoffs and winning two playoff games. Any other kudos? Before we move forward, I would like to thank all of the, and I know we heard a little bit of this earlier, but just to thank everybody who helped make these last two weeks of virtual learning possible. I think this was a difficult time for a lot of people in our community, for teachers, for parents, for kids, for employers. And thank you for working with us on this. We're glad kids are back. And thank you for all of your efforts over the last several weeks. So if we are good on kudos, Ms. Weinberg, would you please present the retirements?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of retirements to honor and mention this evening. They are both civil service personnel. We have Roger Hambrick, and we also have Linda Montgomery. Just wanted to thank these amazing individuals for all that they have done for this district and for the students, and we wish them well.
Thank you very much. So I think at this point of the agenda, we are ready to move on to our first presentation, which is CPS is Bright, River View East.
Yes, it's with great pleasure to announce our CPS is Bright school highlight, Ms.
Is this, oh.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm so loud, I didn't even notice it wasn't on. So yeah, thank you, everyone, for having me. Professor Wagner, Superintendent Amott, board members, President Lindy, Vice President Jones. River View East at a glance. So we serve preschool through 12th grade. K through 6, we're mainly a neighborhood school, and then 7 through 12, we open up to be a choice school, and we have students coming from all areas of the city. Our 9 through 12 does specialize in health technology, and I'll go into that a little bit more later. We have about 500 students total, so I always say, we are small but vast. And one of the really cool things about being pre-K through 12 is we have a lot of siblings. So one family that I can think of, we had a graduate last year, and the youngest one is currently in preschool, and they span the whole gamut. During remote learning, I would pop into classes, and I would be in one's class, and I could see other ones on the couches and all on their own, on their devices. So it's pretty exciting. It also opens up the ability to have older students mentor younger students. So our 10th grade, like, student council just tie-dyed with the kindergarten, and it was a really exciting experience. Next slide, please. So some of our academic highlights. So in elementary, we have pretty small class sizes. K through 3, they are self-contained, and we do the Witten Wisdom curriculum, which is a really culturally responsive ELA curriculum that incorporates science, social studies, literature through a number of modules. 4 through 6, we use the same curriculum, and we have a three-teacher team, so students do rotate amongst teachers. In our secondary high school, we offer four AP classes this year: AP Language, AP Human Geo, Psychology, and Statistics. And we are thinking of adding a couple next year. Our health tech program, so students can graduate with an STNA or N or phlebotomy certification, so they can get those while they are in high school. And this year, we have the first year of our internship with TriHealth. So we have one student enrolled this year, and they just had their session for planning for next year, and we had about 40 students coming who were interested. So it is, they go two or three times a week to TriHealth, and they do basically rounds where they get to experience a variety of health careers. And then we also, through our lead partner, Grad Cincinnati, offer a number of college readiness courses, starting junior year, which is more of an exploration, and then senior year, they do a number of applications, they do college visits. And we have had, I should have brought the number, we have a ton of college acceptances already, and as you know, this is the season when they really start to roll in. Next slide, please. So I would say that the, what sets River View apart is our supporting the whole child. So we have a number of supports. Next slide, please. We have a support squad, which meet bi-weekly, so every other week, that has our children's home therapists, our school counselors, resource coordinator, our restorative justice coordinator, school psychologist, our social worker, myself and the assistant principal. And the way it works is teachers have a, we have a Google form that all staff have access to. So far, we have had over 45 that have been filled out this year so far, and we're really pushing people to fill out the form and not just text somebody that this student needs support. So we're making sure that no one falls through the cracks and that we don't duplicate services, so we can really make sure to serve all of our students. Margaret's Place is also listed up here. That is through the Joe Torre Safe at Home Foundation. We are the only school outside of New York and LA to have a Margaret's Place. So it is a place at school where students can get counseling. It is run by a social worker. We also have LGBTQ group that meets in there. It is a violence prevention program that has peer leaders. It's a really exciting opportunity. Also, we have a restorative justice program, a full-fledged restorative justice program in our middle school that we're trying to expand out. But as you probably know, middle school is one of the highest need areas for social emotional needs. And so so far, our social, our restorative justice coordinator has done about 70 circles or mediations a month since the beginning of the school year. He also did culture-setting circles in every single middle school class in the first two weeks of school. In addition, we have a full PBIS program, which includes our HAWK store, which we have scaled for different age groups. So for the younger ones, everything is very cheap with HAWK bucks. And for our older students, we like them to have to save to kind of learn about delayed gratification. And one thing I forgot to mention, we have 13 small group social-emotional cohorts across all grade levels that we have identified based on surveys and student need and all that sort of thing. Next slide, please. So programs and partnerships. As I said, our lead agency is Grad Cincinnati. We also work with the Children's Home. We have a number of therapists through them. Columbia Tusculum and East End Community Councils are our neighborhood councils. Free Store Food Bank we work with. We have, we are building with our resource coordinator, a full pantry where parents will be able to shop for free once a week. So we are building that up. It's almost ready to go, which is really exciting. Great American Insurance works with us. We get a lot of holiday gifts through them, activities beyond the classroom, Adventure Crew, the YWCA, which funds Margaret's Place. One other thing I wanted to mention is we got a nice donation from the neediest kids of all, $10,000 to buy winter clothing for our students, so that is really exciting. Next slide, please. Extracurriculars. So we are small, but we've got a lot of fun stuff. So we have more girls-to-women, Speak Up, Speak Out, cheerleading, boys' and girls' basketball, girls' volleyball. We have elementary soccer this year. Next year, we're going to get football. And cross-country is about to start. We also offer through Grad Cincinnati, a number of after-school programs and clubs for 7 through 12th grade. They have cooking club, makeup and beauty, garden club in our, we have a garden on campus, a food garden, spoken word club. They just started a tie-dye club, so whatever students are interested in, they, we can get people to come in and support. Yeah, so we have a ton of programs and activities, and we're currently looking to grow some of them. So I brought with me today one of our alum from the class of 2021, who we brought back to be our Speak Up, Speak Up advisor. And so I'm just going to let her share a little bit about her experience at River View and what she's been up to since. Rachel Scales. Forgot to say.
I'm Rachel. The beginning of my River View time wasn't the best. It wasn't the greatest time. But with my support of my teachers and the support of Charlene Myers, my older, my other principal, I was able to not let what was bothering me in, like, out of school bother me in school. I was able to keep up with my grades, stay in activities. I played volleyball. I was always in other extracurricular activities. And then junior year was like extra hard. My dad passed at the beginning of my junior year. So I was able to, with the support of my teachers and with my principal, once again, I was able to not let what was going on at home bother me now with what was going on in school. The kind of same thing with my senior year, too. It was just a whole rocky four years, honestly. My senior year, Ms. Wolf came, and she was just like, had a breath of fresh air. She really made everything not seem so hard or so, seem so heavy. I graduated really like great. Senior year flew by super fast. I had nothing lower than to see my senior year with the help of my teachers pushing me and wanting me to do better. Senior year, I got involved in a lot of things. Speak Up, Speak Out being one of them. We've talked with you guys before with Speak Up, Speak Out. I am now that advisor for Speak Up, Speak Out at River View because of how much it, it made an impact with us doing it, how much the adults listened to us and heard our voices. I wanted to help my younger peers be able to also do that and not feel that they couldn't do that because they were younger. That's why I'm doing it and not one of the teachers at the school. I also have the full support of the staff with that, too, because I am a new employee, so I have no clue how CPS works. So I have the support of my now coworkers to help me with what I'm doing and my boss. I have the support of them to, when I need help, I'm not afraid to ask for help, and they're not afraid to give me their honest truth. So it's been a great time, being a CPS kid and being a CPS kid going to River View has been the best four years that I have. Oh, I have went to Christ College. I got my medical assistance. It was a 16-week program because I am not the best at school. So I did a 16-week program. I am now a certified medical assistant. I did the STNA program at River View, so I have that. I take a, I take a test like in another year or two. So I'm a certified STNA phlebotomist and medical assistant, so I can work at all locations, hospitals, doctor's offices, and things like that. And it also helps me like build my nursing career, like if I want to continue to be in the medical field. Starting at River View has helped that continue, has helped me level up my health field experience.
Don't go anywhere, Rachel. We're not done here. Any questions for either of us?
Dr. K?
I don't have a question. I just am so excited. Rachel, you are CPS strong, and I just want to say thank you for sharing, thank you for giving back, and I am so happy to see you. I wish I could just take you and make you the poster child and have you go around to all these schools because you are such an inspiration. Thank you so much for giving back. You are really, you're doing it. You are awesome, girl. Proud of you and great work at River View.
Vice President Jones?
Rachel, I think I remember you from Speak Up. Did you speak a couple times publicly here, and I remember that. I think that's what student voice is all about. You're a mentor to those young people, and I congratulate you on, and on wanting and stepping, to do that and stepping up to work with other young people who want their voices heard. So I appreciate that, and congratulations to you on all the accomplishments that you've
Ms. Weinberg?
Rachel, thank you again for sharing your story. And actually, Rachel, come up to the mic. I remember meeting you when I came to River View, and you're amazing. So thank you for sharing your story. I think a lot of students need to hear that, and I commend you on continuing to push forward, and I wish you all of the best. And again, thank you so much for sharing with us today. Thank you.
Mr. Morosky?
Rachel, while you have the mic, first of all, congratulations on all of your success in the medical field already. I'll warn you that if you ever have to take my blood, I will be very scared. I have a real issue with it. I donate it because it's important, but I don't like it. So kudos to you for even doing that. And I have a question for you, and my question is, and for other folks who are watching, there's a lot of people watching. What is Speak Up, Speak Out? And why, and why do you feel it empowered you so much?
Speak Up, Speak Out started in the death of George Floyd with police brutality. So it started with a group, I want to say with like West High Kids. It started with athletes. It started with just a group of African-American children asking us how we felt about police brutality and how we felt with certain things going on in the world now, like just a real conversation, kind of no filter, just how we felt about what was going now. And then they opened it wider than just West High. We got River View, we had Schroeder, we had Walnut Hills. We had at least a few kids from each high school in the CPS area. And then it, the more we talked, we kind of shifted more to things in CPS, how we felt that we weren't being taught our culture longer than the 28 days of February, sometimes 29. And when February came, they felt that it was appropriate to just talk then, and then after February, it was over. We felt that we didn't have enough representation of who we were in CPS also. When we talked, we talked to the superintendent before about the situation, and she just let us know that not a lot of African-Americans go to school for teaching, and so that's something that we can't control. And so it just shifted more to what we wanted to see in our individual schools, how we wanted everybody to be able to have a voice and not for one kid to think that they knew what they wanted for their high school. So Josh Harding came up with the idea, well, the original Speak Up, Speak Out crew came up with the idea of individual peer groups in every high school. So now every high, I believe every high school in CPS has an individual Speak Up, Speak Out peer group ran by a mentor or some kind of facilitator. I run River Views because I went to River View and I was in the group.
Thank you so much. And I just want, I think it's important for folks to know that, and I think it's important for them to know, and Rachel, you probably know this, you know, a lot of that work in the interim superintendent when she was deputy was a part of this, too, you know, had a direct impact on the curriculum that we've adopted. That is culturally responsive. That does put Black lives at the center of our decisions, that influence our anti-racism policy. And so I just want to thank you for when you were a student and all the students that do this, because your voice does matter to us. And so thank you for that. And Principal Wolf, congratulations on all the success at River View East. All right, so one quick question for you, and sorry I'm taking so much time, but River View East is such an interesting school to me. I mean, the cross-section of humanity that exists in those neighborhoods and walks through those halls and the myriad amount of programs that you've, neighborhood school, high school, hang the programs, preschool, five-star preschool. If there's one thing you're most excited about that, I know, it's a terrible question, that's coming up, what is it?
Oh, my gosh. That is a really hard question because I get excited about a lot of things. Yeah, yeah. I'm really excited about the possibility. All of the things you mentioned, I was really excited about the possibility of being at River View because I see River View as a place where there are a lot of lives that can be really impacted by a quality education and a positive and culturally responsive environment. So I am just excited about, I mean, you know, like getting our graduation rate up, getting all those first graders reading, to be more specific, but there is, I mean, the sky's the limit. Rach, in the announcements every day, I say, let's soar. And that's, you know, we're just going to keep soaring. So I'm excited about, yeah, how long we have students, because we can have them for so long, and the ability to really impact communities through that.
I appreciate it, Principal. It's a great place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Mr. Craig?
So I just want to first say hi again to Principal Wolf. You go way back. But I think it's a tremendous thing that you all are doing with the Restorative Justice Program. I just want to give a quick shout out to that because I just want to give a, a quick shout out to that because I think that is a large part of changing the culture in a school. Is it getting folks to understand how to communicate with each other, how to be respectful in that process of understanding? So I just wanted to give a little shout out to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Ms. Bolden.
Yes, very quickly, um, thank you very much for being here tonight and, uh, of course, very impressed with, uh, the graduate herself, but also want to compliment you, Principal Wolf, on the transition, uh, from, from a previous principal and, uh, and to your leadership. I'm a big supporter of, uh, K-12 schools. I think it's a wonderful choice for many, many families for the reasons you've kind of outlined tonight. Uh, and particularly, uh, we're glad that we have at least three K-12 schools in the district. One on the east, one on the west, and, and of course, uh, one in the middle with the SCPA. But I, I'm, one of the best parts of every year for a number of years for me was how you celebrate the graduation of your students, which is class day. Yeah, I don't know if that's a tradition that you're continuing, but I would encourage anyone to attend class day, uh, where the students, uh, sort of walk, march, celebrate from the school over to another facility that's beautiful. And family is sitting on, in the same area where the students are and students have an opportunity to speak. And it's, uh, and then there's refreshments afterward. It's just a beautiful ceremony and I hope you can maintain that, the intimacy of that great tradition and encourage board members to attend class day. Thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. I just wanted to ask that the two of you, is there anything we can do to be more helpful for you and your school?
Um, right, I'm like, wow. Um, I, I will say I, I appreciate the going remote briefly, like the reset was amazing. So that was very supportive. And I will say the attendance and engagement of students during that time was like, we were surprised in the best way. So, um, but we're thrilled to be back, honestly. But yeah, I think the, all of the things that were mentioned, like the, the talent department just pushing through so many subs is huge. Um, but yeah, I just appreciate your guys' support so far.
Well, we, we appreciate you and thank you very much for all of your hard work and for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much.
Okay, I think we are ready to move on to the second presentation tonight, which is a health and safety update from Ms. Bunty.
Good evening. We can go ahead and advance the slides, please. Today, uh, we are focused on strategy two, health and safety. And I would like to open up by saying we had a successful return to in-person learning. Um, several of, um, our PLT members were out in school. So these pictures were taken today. Um, so I had the opportunity to see dancers at SCPA. I know Ms. Bunty went to AWL, um, and just going and seeing the, the learning in action. So just want to take the opportunity to thank our families as we went through this process, our staff and our amazing students. We will continue with our COVID-19 update with Ms. Susan Bunty.
Good evening. So on the next slide, I am so excited to share, um, that decrease in the seven-day moving average. It has been a really long time since we've seen second, seven consecutive green dots, just meaning that the number of COVID cases within the city, um, is slowly but surely dropping. So we keep fingers, toes and eyeballs crossed that that will continue to be, but just that that is a really reassuring sign that we have not seen again in a while. So on the next slide, you can see where we are in terms of staffing. Today, we had 394 absences with an overall 91% staff attendance rate across the district. Um, we were able to fill many more of our substitute vacancies than in the past. So we were very excited about that news. On the next slide, you can see our overall fill rate for substitutes. We had 120 fewer subs needed today than on the highest day that we had, which I believe, um, was that week of January 10. Next slide, please. However, we still need people who are interested in being substitutes. So we are doing several things in order to recruit, primarily among them is to provide financial incentives to folks who are willing to work consecutive days, um, within a four-week block. So if you work every day within a four-week time period, you will receive $150, um, as an additional payment. We also are continuing to build out recognition plans and provide professional development to our substitutes. So speaking of support on the next slide, we want all of our substitutes to be successful. So paid orientation is available for them. We just completed our very first session. It was great to see so many eager faces, um, on the virtual training session. And we will have three more opportunities for our newly hired substitutes to participate. These will include classroom management, CPS core values, and most importantly perhaps, is how to actually access where folks are needed during any given day. On the next slide, you can see where we stand in terms of applications. So we've received 94 applications for those willing to become substitute teachers. Thank you again, that number continues to climb. We are currently onboarding 62 of those. And today we had, um, approximately 14 people who were out and about to picked up assignments. So thank you to each of those 14 new subs. We know that during the time of this pandemic, we have to also have mitigation strategies. On the next slide, you can see our vaccination, um, clinics that are upcoming. And I'm happy to announce that on March 3rd, we will have a surprise guest who has worn orange and black, Hude, um, who will be with us at Wynton Hills Academy. We are also absolutely thrilled to have vaccinated 1,017 folks, including students, family members and staff since December 10. Vaccination clinics are also being offered in our community. Please do not wait only for the ones that we offer. So the health department offers vaccinations each and every day from nine to four. Please register and, um, that information is available on their website. Children's Hospital also does booster clinics on their main campus from 4:30 to six on Wednesday. And we know that it's also important for our staff members to be well. So staff, please, please, please take advantage of this opportunity. I know I have personally. If you are not feeling well, please make an appointment on the Google Calendar. You can go before work, get tested, and if you test negative, go on in with knowing that you do not have, um, infectious COVID at that time. Please make sure too, all staff must continue to use the COVID hotline. We appreciate all of those who continue to do so to report. We also, on the next slide, offer surveillance testing for both our students and soon-to-be staff. This is for asymptomatic, um, close contact students can be voluntarily tested on a weekly basis. We also are going to offer this as an opportunity for our teachers and specialized classrooms and our preschool teachers where students have more of a challenge sometimes with, um, mask wearing. And on the next slide, we just want to make sure that our staff and our public is aware that our folks have the opportunity to receive additional sick leave if that is needed. Um, all groups have a one-time, five-day advancement. Um, our teachers have a 15-day advance. In CDC guidance on the next slide, it seems like it's perpetually changing. So know this, if you test positive, any person test positive regardless of symptoms or vaccination status, please stay home. So if you test positive, that is an immediate ticket to be at home. If you have questions about that, if you are a staff member, please again call that hotline number. And if you are a student, please contact your student or your school nurse. On the next slide, just a reminder that close contacts, it depends on where, um, one was exposed to the virus. So the rules are a little bit different for the guidance if you were exposed in a school setting versus if you were exposed outside the school setting. So this can become somewhat complicated. The best thing to do again is if you're not sure, to contact the COVID hotline or to contact your school. We are also making sure that the website is, um, has the most up-to-date guidance. We understand that it has shifted a lot in recent weeks. So all of this is being updated as well. And finally, we know that it is never our, um, intent to have to shift schools to remote learning, but we also recognize that the variant is still with us. So please note under the notes section that this really varies by program and by the type of staff who's out. We began with an 85% threshold, but that is just a very, very, very beginning. So our intent is to always fill vacancies with school staff and/or subs. And we are grateful for the increase in substitute teachers. If schools cannot maintain staffing, then they're placed on a 24-hour watch list. And if that continues to have staffing challenges, then that school will be placed into remote learning for five consecutive days inclusive of weekends. And now Ms. Solano will share some operations updates.
Hi, please. Um, so, uh, all of our facility staff were trained on how to, um, do additional cleaning, um, to, um, handle COVID cases and also, um, sanitize each classroom and, um, all the areas within the buildings. Um, as of Sunday, um, all of our areas and all the buildings and, uh, school buildings, Iowa and Ed Center, um, disinfected and also treated with the electrostatic machine, the 360 machine. Um, all classrooms were stocked, uh, with cleaning supplies and ready to go, um, by this morning. So, um, as I mentioned back, uh, last Saturday, I believe, um, that our current HVAC system utilizes, um, the highest quality filter that's been recommended by the manufacturer. Um, and so our, um, HVAC systems are actually, um, have a pre-filter and a final filter. The pre-filter is the MERV 10 and then the final filter is, um, the 11. So, um, basically the first filter removes dust and, and things of that nature, which allows the second filter to actually, um, remove other particles. If you are interested in knowing what a MERV rating is, that's, um, the minimum efficiency reporting value, MERV. And it's basically a rating that, um, capture, gives you the, gives that filter an ability to capture certain particles. So the higher the rating, um, the better it is at trapping certain particles. Right now and previously, filters have been replaced throughout the day as COVID positive cases arise. So what we've done is we've purchased, um, air purifiers. As a matter of fact, 80 came in today. Will be, uh, the facilities, uh, manager will have those in the preschools first thing in the morning. We're expecting, um, another shipment, uh, tomorrow and then the final shipment on Wednesday. We did go ahead and order two for Hyde Park. Um, and usually takes four to five days, but as soon as they come in, we will make sure to have those in those trailers. Can you go back one more? I'm sorry. So with the, with those, uh, air purifiers, um, they do have a HEPA filter built in. And just to let you know, the MERV rating for HEPA filter is 17. So you can see it, it, it is a, an increase from what we're using now with our regular industrial HVAC system. Next slide, please. N95 masks. So the masks have been ordered, um, for our preschool and our, um, teachers in autism, multiple disability classrooms. Um, we, they're out for shipment. We just haven't received them yet, but as soon as they, well, as soon as they are received, um, we will, um, begin a distribution to these teachers. And as I mentioned before, these are considered respirators. And so, um, we're required, even if the respirators are being used voluntarily, we're required to do training. And so there will be, um, a video on Safe School to just show people how to dawn and doff the mask, how to take care of them, when to know it's time to replace them. So that will be happening simultaneously. As soon as they come in, we'll release that Safe School video. We'll provide the masks to, um, those who, who want to use them on a voluntary basis. As far as students, um, and as I mentioned, um, previously, N95s were not designed for, for students, for, for children. And then really not designed for people who wear beards either, um, because you're supposed to have a really good solid fit, uh, with the mask. However, the masks that we have been buying are NIOSH and FDA approved. Our environmental health and safety, uh, specialist does check the FDA list frequently to make sure that what we are currently using has not been removed off of their approved list. Um, when COVID first came out, an emergency, um, was, um, allowed for all these different masks, types of masks to come in. And so you'll see on Amazon and other places, you know, they might say NIOSH approved or FDA approved, but, um, we actually check the CDA webs, the FDA website to make sure that they're actually on an approved list. Next slide, please. And that's it.
That concludes our presentation, health and safety update. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, interim superintendent Mott and Ms. Bunty and Ms. Solano. Uh, questions from board members. Mr. Morosky.
Um, I was just hoping we could get a refresher, uh, just for the public certification and nothing else, on what a family's options are, because we talked about it a lot last year and certainly the year before, but we haven't in a while. What families' options are who want to keep their kids at home, who don't feel comfortable sending them in to like the school that they attend? What are their options?
We have virtual and CDA as an option.
And if they choose to do neither, then it's truancy?
If they don't come to school and they're enrolled at their school.
Again, just for everyone's justification, I just, because we haven't talked about it in a while, I just think it's good to have that out there.
Right, I'm, I'm just clarifying. If they're enrolled in their school and we're in in-person learning, the expectation is that they come to school for in-person learning. If they're not comfortable with that and want to access the district, uh, remote learning option, uh, we have that available for them. And they can, uh, move in between the two.
Um, I think that part's important too, that they can move between the two. But there's also homeschool as an option too, which just for folks watching is something different, that they would have to get permission from us to do it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Other board members. Ms. Bolden?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I appreciate superintendent saying that and, and Mr. Morosky asking, could you tell the difference? Tell us the difference between virtual and CDA.
For, uh, CDA, it is a hybrid with the Google Meet. Um, so similar to what they have experienced during the remote learning option. Our virtual option is really for a lot of high school students who are looking for credit recovery. Thank you.
Mr. Craig.
I'm happy to hear that we have been able to kind of get back and have that reset with our staffing levels. And I just want to have a little bit of a clarification as to going forward, what, what's the communication that we will be seeing from the district to parents, whatever, to let them know if there are potential concerns or if a school would have potential, uh, staffing issues that may pop up?
Thank you for that question. So we are committed to notifying families, um, the afternoon before a potential school closure. That would be done by robocall and/or email and a letter backpacked home.
And then just one other follow-up, uh, the information that's on the website, is that going to be something that's regularly updated with regards to what schools are remote and not?
So once a decision is made to move a school remote, yes, that information is updated on the website. Yeah, you're exactly right.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Dr. Muth.
I just have a clarifying question. So the process is if a school is below the 85%, they will have a 24-hour watch? Is that not right? For potential remote.
So yes and no. So if a school is at 80, below that 85% threshold, we talk to the principal and we determine whether or not that school can staff. In some cases, it's really highly dependent on what position is out, not necessarily the percentage. So that is the first indicator that helps us take a deeper dive. Once we move through that flow chart, then we talk with the school team about moving into that 24-hour watch period and then moving to a shift to remote.
So is it possible, once the notification is that they're under the 85% or below, is it possible to notify parents to kind of put them on the watch that, hey, your school is under 85%? This may happen. I'm just trying to give parents enough notice so that in the event that it's going to happen, they've had a couple of days' notice in addition to the 24 hours notice?
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. So the only reason I'm hesitating is we have a number of schools who have hovered at that 83% for, since the, we opened and we never moved them to remote. So I also, it's a, it's a challenge. I am more than willing to think through though, and I promise I will, about ways in which we can notify families as early as possible. Because I think that's what, that's what you're seeking is how can we give families as much advanced notice as we possibly can?
Right. If you also just explore that option to be able to give them, you know, when you know, we know. And even if it's just a notification that, hey, it's on the watch, you're going to, you know, you're at below 85% and then parents can have some sort of idea that this could happen.
Yes, yes, we will think through that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Muth. Ms. Bolden, or you've gone already once?
Yeah, I've already gone.
Let me just see if there's anybody who hasn't gone yet. I want to share a couple of things too. Vice President Jones? Okay, so real quick, I will share, I just wanted to reiterate, I think, our commit, my, I think our shared commitment that schools are safe places for children because of the mitigation measures that we are taking and because of the advice that we've received from the medical experts at Children's and at the county. And wanted to reiterate, I think, the importance of in-person schooling, both academically and socio-emotionally, and thank the administration for all of their work and efforts on that front. And to just reiterate again for the public that the reason why we had to be virtual over the last few weeks was a function of an acute staffing shortage. And there are a series of things that the district has done and put in place to address that acute staffing shortage. And I think it's very encouraging to see that we're in a better place now than we were before. I think particularly, I wanted to appreciate the change in subpay in the paid orientation. Those feel like very clear things to target some of the issues that we have that we're seeing a positive return on that. So thank you. I had two questions. One was, and I think you said this, I just didn't catch it quickly enough, but the staffing level today, district-wide, what percent were we?
90.7, which I rounded to 91%.
So I think rounding correctly, I think. It's been a while since I learned this, but 91% staff attendance today is significantly better than where we were two weeks ago. That's great. And then I was curious about, you know, no one knows when or if there will be another wave like this, or if we're not really out of it and it's going to get worse again. And so part of me wants to ask a little bit about thinking way downfield. Are there, are there discussions at all about ways we could partner with organizations like, say, universities who have schools of education? There might be other sources of people who could help in a temporary basis if we needed them? Or is that a terrible idea? But I would love to kind of hear what you think about that.
No, we've definitely been in discussion with not only our university partners, but also with Hamilton County Educational Service Center and other partners who provide subs in the region, temp agencies. And so I think as that community impact really shifts, I can't talk about again how excited I am about those seven consecutive green dots because that's really showing that right now we're having a lull, knock on wood. And so, but we also recognize that as quickly as those green dots come, they might go. So yes, we are definitely looking long-term at what we can do to mitigate.
That's great. Thank you very much. Ms. Bolden?
Yes, just two things. Again, I encourage you to, and I think you probably do use the, what is called the, what, visiting instructor program or something that's in the CFT contract and expand that. Think that's very, very helpful and think that would be good. The other thing is for the public's benefit, people that may not be familiar with CPS and all the things that are a part of CPS have a tendency to say, think that the only, the only people that are missing are teachers. And, and the reality is they're thinking, all these teachers are gone when people says 80, meaning 15% of the teachers or whatever. Could you just explain how much supports and needed, essential people? But how much a support system there is in employees? Because I think some of the teachers are feeling like they're getting the bum rap or something. And the bad press, because we've had to emphasize subs and what. Could you just give an idea of the kind of employees and positions that exist in every one of our schools?
No, that's a very good point. So thank you for raising it. So it takes a village for a school to be successfully run. So not only are teachers an integral part, but of course, our principals and our assistant principals, many of them who also had COVID. We've also had dining services hugely impacted by COVID. Our custodial teams, our building engineers, our school psychologists, our reading and math specialists. And I could continue on in terms of related service providers. Obviously, we've talked about nurses and all of the plethora of school employees that make up that network that really provides a safety net, which supports our students and their learning, both in terms of their social emotional needs and their academic.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Mr. Morosky.
And I just want to piggyback off Ms. Bolden. I think that's a good point. And like today, for example, the memo that we received of note, you know, more than half of the total worst civil service. And we need all these folks to make our schools function. So I think it's a point that needs to be reiterated because I see the same thing, that it's like all these teachers, that that's not the issue. We need more than just teachers in our buildings. Any of us who have spent any time working in schools know that some of those important people to keep that building running may not even be in the classroom, literally running. So appreciate the point. And then I just wanted to ask one more clarifying question. Again, just for the, the parents who may be watching, who are in the camp of, you know, I have immunocompromised folks at home. My kids might be, I might be. We went to great lengths to something I think this board can be proud of and the administration to, to ensure flexibility. So if we could just like spell out just real quick, a little clearly, if you are a parent who has reticence sending your kid back to school, you can choose one of these options, a virtual option, CDA, and maintain your seat in your school?
Yes.
Okay, and you can go between. And when you get back into school, you're not like at a deficit. You're going to be where you would have been.
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you so much. I just think that's an important point to make. Thank you.
Vice President Jones?
Yes, thank you. I just want to take the opportunity to thank all of the staff for the clarity in the presentation. And I think all of these questions are relevant and we need to continue to ask them probably every meeting. I do appreciate the fact, and I, we all have experienced this, that we get a lot of emails from our community stakeholders. And including, I mean, some are friendly, some are supportive, but we expect that. We expect that there's a mix of those who support the actions of the district and those that don't support the actions of the district. But I think the one, the few comments that I've received about folks wanting to take their kids out of the district because we aren't open, I think that sort of bothers me a little bit, that that's where people are thinking because people's focus is on, well, my kid has to be in school every day. And again, comparing us to other districts where they might be. So I think the point is well-taken. I think our president made this point that we want our buildings to be open too. And we, but we also must be diligent in making sure that we have staff to, to be in the buildings. It is not our intention of keeping our students on remote if it's not necessary. And so I'm saying that again because our public is listening to that. We don't want to see anybody leave our district for that reason. But no, again, that our numbers are looking better. They're not exactly where we want them to be, but our numbers are looking better. Our staffing is coming up to par. And there is no reason why this won't work. But again, we will continue to ask the questions and to make sure that we hold ourselves accountable to making sure that our kids are in person. So I just felt like I wanted to make that comment.
Thank you very much. And knowing that I, we have a couple of other presentations tonight, maybe anything else on this front from anyone? Thank you very, very much. We're going to transition now to another important topic, which is our transportation update.
So this is the vision of our transportation department. We, we really want to become a seamless part of the enrollment process. We want all eligible students to get transportation in a timely manner. And we basically just want to be best in class. We want people to think great things about our transportation services, not only our CPS families, but our community as a whole. Next slide, please. So, but this year, this, these were our, these are our transportation services. For the yellow bus, we provide transportation to kindergartners through sixth graders who reside one mile or more from school. For our, also on our yellow buses, it's any preschooler through 12th grade with a disability. And we are required to provide transportation for all of our students who are so disabled that they are unable to walk to or from school. And that's found in ORC 3327.01. We also have dedicated yellow buses for athletic events. And the next slide, I'll go into a little bit more detail. For sort of, oh. For sort of, we provide metro bus passes for seventh and 12th graders who live 1.25 miles or greater from school. And then we also have a fleet of vans. We don't, but our vendors do, who provide services to our McKinny Vento, JFS, and students with disabilities that where the yellow bus or metro can't accommodate, cannot accommodate. We also provide cross-district services for our students in foster care. And as you can see, we're anywhere from as far out as Lebanon City to Covington, Kentucky, and this list is continuing to grow. We also have bus monitors on, currently on 104 routes. We provide special harnesses for 93 students and wheelchair accommodations for 64 students. Next slide, please. So this gets to some of the questions, the follow-up questions that we were asked. So yes, the law does require in ORC Section 3327.01 that we provide transportation to kindergartners through eighth grade if they live more than two miles from school. That's the law. Transportation for preschool students, we actually have ESSA and also OIC that requires us to do this. ESSA requires us to provide transportation to our foster care preschool students. And OIC requires that we provide preschool special needs children with transportation. Dedicated buses for this year, our dedicated buses are used for athletic practices and games. They're also used when they're available to support college visits, curriculum-related events and dental vision runs at our in-house health center. We do this weekly. And on occasion, we've had other special events where we were requested for these dedicated buses, such as men organize, respected and educated, our more group and our girls to women groups. This year, we did have some issues primarily because of the driver shortage just that everyone is facing across the nation. We've had issues with buses showing up late, showing up to the wrong venue or not showing up at all. However, I've been told that this is not typical. This hasn't been typical historically. Slide, please. So additional data for who we actually transport right now. As of today, we've got 67 students who are in, who fall under McKinny Vento, 30 JFS students, and our students with special needs who are eligible is 1,699. And we currently provide cross-district, cross, students who live in others, who are residents of other school districts, 57 of them, we are currently providing transportation. Now, that's 57 is part of the 97 above for McKinny Vento and JFS. So with bus monitors, the question came up as to why we're providing them is based on what the IP says. So if a student IP says that they need a bus monitor, we have to provide a bus monitor. It doesn't mean that it's a one-to-one. I mean, you might have six kids on the bus and a one-monitor, and that's fine. Sometimes there might be less kids on the bus, but you still need, if, if any of those kids IP says they need a monitor, then we have to provide them. Next slide, please. This is a question about the budget. So total for non-staff is over 30, is $37.5 million. The biggest chunk by far is the yellow bus service and sort of metro services. That's 35.08 million. Our fuel costs, we have to budget for that because the bus companies do not pay for their own fuel. That's 2.1 million. And then we've had to hire contract employees because our department is short five people. So that budget, the opening budget for that was 350,000. And then you add on administrative salary and overhead. That's an additional 2.08 million. For a total of 39.6 million. When we're looking at our McKinny, McKinny Vento, this is cost to date. So McKinny Vento, 255,000 plus, JFS, 64,000. And our special needs, these are kids who have to ride the vans, almost 96,000. So total to date on these three groups, we've spent 414,000, $414,600. And then the next three are the cost for monitors. And these are a snapshot in time. For example, these are based on just how much we were charged for that one for one month. And for the UTS and first student, that was what we were charged for November and Peterman for October. And you can see that total for just that one month is 343,119. Next slide, please. So this is the plan for next year. We, we did hire an interim director back in August. She's doing a fantastic job just keeping the management of day-to-day operations and keeping the department stabilized. We have completed our vendor selection. And as a matter of fact, in the treasurer's report, we are asking for approval for six vendors. And we are still interviewing for a new director of transportation. We're hoping to have the optimization study completed by the end of February, beginning of March, with a final plan to the board in March. And at the same time, once the board approves that, we will notify the families of the plan. And the goal is to have the kids with a transportation card in hand by July. So it's aggressive, but we're going to keep plugging, plugging at it and so we get it done. Next slide, please. Okay. So as I mentioned, we have, we are recommending six vendors. Four are existing vendors with two more added. And we, because of our growing need for McKinny Vento at JFS and also some of our students with disabilities, although we provide them curve to curve, we're finding that some need door to door. And so with that, we were, we expanded to include some companies that can handle that, the 1Z, 2Z, 3Z students in a. the 1Z, 2Z, 3Z students in a car or in a passenger van. We have one company that I'm really excited about. They're new to the Cincinnati area, but they're not new to this business. To date, they are currently in 13,000 schools across the nation. They've served over 1 million riders. They can support our special needs students, our McKinney-Vento students, and our foster care students. They are located in Denver Public Schools, Seattle Public Schools, Houston Independent School District, County of Los Angeles, California, to name a few. I don't want to say they're Uber for Kids because they're not part of Uber, but it's a similar concept. Part of our plan is to optimize a yellow bus routing to accommodate those seventh and eighth graders. And we want to do that because we know there's going to be an additional cost to add seventh and eighth graders on the bus. But by optimizing, we can put more kids on the bus, fill up the buses more, and actually reduce some of the routes with hopes to free up some existing buses to put seventh and eighth graders on. And then it will minimize how many additional seventh and eighth grade routes we would need. So that is the plan. And we'll be awarding the routes based on the optimization analysis. And then we're also going to take into consideration school healthy start times. The goal is that nobody's going to start before 8:45. And then the other piece to that is looking at vendor capacity, what they're able to provide us. And then we're just going to continue to research the logistics and the costs with establishing a CPS fleet. There are some grants available. I don't think there are a lot when I look at how much money districts have received. But nevertheless, there's some money that we could probably apply for. And the next big item is to interview and recommend to the board a director of transportation. Next slide.
Next slide.
So what we plan to do for 2023, yellow bus will be kindergarten through eight, same as this year, one mile or greater. Yellow bus preschools through 12 with disabilities, that hasn't changed. Dedicated yellow bus for athletic events, and we're going to also try to do field trips. So currently, the athletics, the dedicated buses don't do field trips. We have an application called a BusHive. And that is a system where schools can go in and indicate they have a need for buses for field trips. And then the vendors go on there and if they can accommodate that, they'll let them know. So that's the current plan for right now, that we're using this year. We're also recommending that we continue to keep SORTA for our ninth and 12th graders who reside 1.25 miles or greater. And then continue with our vans for the McKinney-Vento, JFS, and students with disabilities. So we're hoping that we'll be able to accommodate more of our students with the most needs by having these other two companies that also provide van service. Next slide, please. So estimated costs. Unfortunately, I don't have a cost yet because I have to really wait until the optimization study is done to see exactly how many routes we're going to need. But I do know that the yellow bus prices have gone up just from looking at the RFP. Fuel prices have gone up. And then we also have the issue with SORTA that if, you know, we get the rate that they gave us this year at 3.15 versus if they choose to have us purchase passes like the public does at $80 per month. So that's 80 times 10, or $800. And then the state estimates that it costs $1,077 per student. That's just average estimate. So you would take that times either 3.15 or the 800 times the number of seventh and eighth graders on the yellow buses. And then, of course, there's costs associated with just bus driver shortages. Some of them are monetary and other things other are not. So how we plan to mitigate some of these costs? So we are able to apply for Medicaid reimbursement. So we're looking into doing that. We're putting that together now, and we'll be working with DSS to get those requests submitted. Also, we can request reimbursement for JFS transportation. So we're going to take advantage of whatever is out there that's available to us to try to recoup some of our costs. And then again, the goal is to reduce some of the routes that we are needed with adding seventh and eighth grade. We know we're going to have to have more routes, but we're hoping to minimize how many we would need. And that should also help us with our costs. Any questions for me?
I think we'll probably have a number of questions. And I think before we do, I wanted to just try to check that my framing background context on some of this was accurate and might be helpful for folks viewing. For Ms. Solano, the way I'm kind of situating this presentation in the arc of the last six to nine months is something like this. I just want to make sure I've got it right. We had some pretty significant challenges with transportation over the course of the summer and the fall. I'm saying that descriptively, not ascribing responsibility at all, just descriptively. I think big challenges, I think with families finding out about changes to metro and designated routes causing some significant friction, I think, at the beginning of the school year. And there had been and were again this fall, I think, some ongoing challenges with yellow bus around timeliness. And lots of good things, too, but I think some real areas for improvement that are happening. And so against that backdrop, we've got, I think, a really helpful presentation that shows all kinds of hard work you and the team have been doing to try to say, how do we make things better for next school year? And there's going to be a whole host of things in that presentation. But in terms of how the board will engage, if I'm reading this right, this is the update, and there will be another proposal in the spring for what's going to be different about transportation for next school year. I just want to make sure I had the arc correct. Is that basically right?
Yeah, so we'd have to, of course, look at, once we do the optimization studying and determine exactly.
Can you say just a little louder? Sorry, it was hard to hear.
Once the optimization study is done and we know exactly how many routes we need, then we'll be looking at pricing that the vendors have proposed. And of course, we will try to use the ones that are, I don't want to say the cheapest, but that are most cost-effective for those routes. And then we will be able to tell you this is how much money we need from vendor A, vendor B, and vendor C. And then these vendors are going to take care of our neediest kids of all. And so the goal is to have as many kids on the bus within a short period of time so that we're minimizing the negative impact on instruction.
And there's no request for action from us tonight on any of this. You're updating us on the hard work you all are doing, getting ready for a proposal to come in a couple of months.
That is correct. That is correct. I would just like to give some clarity, some just strong points. Thank you for saying in the beginning of the year, starting in the summer, there was a complete shift in our service with metro. And our families and kids were stuck in the middle of that situation. Our school staff, our transportation department stood in a gap to make sure that our kids were safe and tried to make the best out of a bad situation. During this time, what we did was to look at innovative ways of moving forward. That's one. Two, it is costly. So the last communication that we had with metro was moving. I want to point out from our $315 pass to $800 to pay per child. So that affects the budget. The other thing that we heard loud and clear during this process from the fall and the winter with our kids on regular metro routes was the concern with our younger riders, seventh and eighth grade. So in the proposal here, we looked at putting seventh and eighth graders on with yellow buses, another increase in cost. So I'm just really just want to highlight some very key points. So based on our learning through this process this year, safety was important. We heard K through eight. We are still offering the same services that we have as far as miles. So the state says you do not have to provide transportation for ninth through 12th graders. We do. We have to. So that's what we do, but that is a cost. The state says you have to provide service for K to eight from two miles up. We do 1.25 miles. So I just want to take the opportunity to share with the public because I don't think people see how well the board and the vision of the board to ensure that our kids have access to get to school on time. And we know it plays a role in our graduation rate, in our reading ability. So this plan that Ms. Solano shared with you was student-centered. What can we do to ensure that our kids have access to safe transportation, to get to school with the adults that care for them so they can be successful? But I just wanted to give some context with the increased cost, the complexity of our transportation. So it's just not yellow buses or just not metro. We also transport using vans. And Ms. Solano and her team have done a tremendous job of looking at a variety of options that we will bring forth again. What was missing, and I just want to make sure that the board understands, what was missing was the cost. We cannot give you the cost until we do that optimization study and figure out the routes. So that is taking place in February, and then we will come back to the board with the cost. But we did share the plan. Now we will add the finances to that.
That's great. Thank you very much. So questions from Mr. Maraski?
I appreciate the question, President Lindy. And then Superintendent, I appreciate the backstory, too. And one thing I would add to everything that you said, which I second very adamantly, is a lot of folks don't also realize that part of our challenge, too, is every single one of our high schools is a high school of choice. And so, you know, we want to give students options. And as such, we have students that may live, you know, far away from the school where they want to go. They want to go to Aiken so they can partake in the farming program, and they may live far away. And so I appreciate you highlighting all those things that we kind of go above and beyond for. But one point of clarity for the public, and then just two quick questions, President. It should be quick. The point of clarity is, I know, and I know we know, but can you say a bit about who the McKinney-Vento students are?
Those are our homeless children.
Right. So students experiencing homelessness, and the law says that we have to get them to their school where they started. So you could have someone at Mount Washington Elementary, and they're couch surfing now in Westwood, and we have to try to get them back. And so that's a cost. I think it's important to highlight that for folks who didn't know. Second, is there a 30-second version of why the metro costs? And I'm over fighting with metro. I think we need to move beyond that. But that's a dramatic jump. Is there a quick version as to why it's so much more?
So the 3.15 per metro card.
To 800, yeah.
Well, that's just the special deal they gave to CPS, right? The $80 a month is what the general public pays to just go into their Zone 1, I think it's what it's called. So we figured 10 months of needing a pass times the $80 per month, that's where the $800 comes. That's like if they give us nothing. They said, you know, we're not having any dealings with you. We're not having, you know, your kids can bypass for them, and they're going to be treated just like any other, you know, consumer of our product. And so that's where the $800 comes from.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Solano. And then lastly, kind of a philosophical question, but I also think pragmatic. Good Lord. Long day. The timeline is super aggressive, and anyone up here knows that. I like aggressive. However, I'm curious, just to be on the safe side, just want to ask. I mean, this is an aggressive timeline. The optimization study, to me, I'm speaking for myself, is like the key. That's the key and kind of the linchpin. And it comes after hiring a new director. I just want to know, like, if, you know, if we don't, do we have to have a new director to start the optimization study?
So that's why they're both in February, they overlap.
Okay, so they, okay.
Yeah, so it's not like we're going to do one and wait till we do that and then do the other. We've got both balls rolling.
I just, that optimization study, and Ms. Bolton and I talk about this a lot. We talked about it in Policy Committee for, as you know, and as most folks know, for months with the old board and the new board, that, you know, we got to rethink all the transportation. What does transportation mean? It's not just buses, right, which you laid out real well. So that optimization study, to me, is where it is. So thanks so much.
Vice President Jones?
Yes, I'm going to be brief, but I want to piggyback off of Mr. Maraski for a minute. I, too, am sort of beyond the whole metro thing. But I do think that it's bad. It's awful that we cannot negotiate, that that's the least that metro and SORTA can do is to negotiate that price. And so I may make an assignment at the end of the meeting for us to at least have a conversation with them about it. It's, you know, I mean, that's ridiculous. You know, our parents are taxpayers as well. They pass the levy. I think it's worth looking into. So I'll say that. And then also, my final comment, which I noticed on the upcoming Finance Committee meeting, there's going to be some conversation about the high school start time. So I'm curious to know how the transportation aligns or doesn't align with high school start time. So I will appreciate hearing more about that at the more appropriate time.
Dr. Muffett?
I appreciate the work that you all have done. It's a lot, and this is craziness for our kids and our families. I do have a question, though, and maybe it's an assignment along with Vice President Jones. Is there any interest in the city and the county having a partnership with us to help us negotiate these prices down? I do know if the kids get a regular pass, is there any, you know, they're getting a regular pass that they can actually use, unlike the extra, they can use that to go across the town for work or other things. Is there any exploration in sharing that cost with, you know, to see if there is? I don't think they do transfers anymore, but, you know, maybe making our families pay $10 a month. I don't even know what the amount is, but I'm just wondering, is there any way that we can, A, get that number down from 800 down a little? If we're buying 4,000 passes, they should be able to cut us a break. And then is there any possibility for a partnership with the county and the city to share that cost? Because the city has asked us what do we need, and that's definitely something that we need, is to have that transportation fixed or at least adjusted for our families and our students. And then B, or C, whichever number, is it possible to share that? Maybe come up with some creative ways so that that's not all on us? So that we can maybe find a way that maybe if the kids are getting a pass that they can use from beyond school, that maybe there's a way that they share that cost? Maybe, I don't know what that could be. And I would hate to raise fees, but is there a way that we can kind of get that cost shared? Get it down and then shared?
Other board member questions or reactions? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the report. I think it's very good. And unfortunately, we have to be in the weeds to help you figure this out and to figure out how to move the community to where the community is more helpful to our students. I mean, even with metro, it's a 70% on time, meaning 30% it's not. That means children are getting to school late with metro. But this report mostly is all about yellow bus, which is about our younger folks. And I'm very encouraged by some of these recommendations, very encouraged because I think it's showing some good creativity. I think, too, the Finance Committee and the Policy Committee. I think too, the Finance Committee and the Policy Committee have been working on all of these aspects that are, you know, a little bit higher level, not as granular as this. So I think we're going to have some success because I think a lot of efforts are kind of coming together at the right time and I appreciate it. I would, a couple real quick things. I don't know that this is the time to push metro until we kind of know what our plan might be. Because I think we probably have to present some kind of a compromise. We're not going to get our high school students to school without using metro, which we can't do it. But I think the city fathers and mothers and county mothers and fathers and the Sorda Board would be interested in at least hearing of our narrative as to why this has to happen, why there has to be some change and maybe what is a plan regarding our extra routes and regarding the services just on routes. And I think it has something to do with number of transfers. So that's the metro piece. If there's no transfer to the point that the superintendent raised about safety, then that's kind of interesting. If you're going from your bus stop to the school and these people in transportation have even figured out which bus stops are within 200 yards of our high schools. I mean, they are getting it right down to the nitty gritty and it's, it's the way it has to be. I'm interested in the seventh and eighth grade piece because that's something, you're right, we did learn that, as the superintendent mentioned. We learned that people were nervous about especially the seventh graders. But we also learned that it's kind of weird to have two buses going to the same place for the same family. And we also know that some seventh and eighth graders want to have that additional pass because they're an extracurricular or something. So I would just offer a suggestion that there be some degree of choice for seventh and eighth grade families that, you know, you can do this or that depending upon how you feel about it. I am totally into this dedicated fleet that we have or should have because as a very old person, I remember at CPS a thousand years ago, and some, there's at least one or two people in the audience that will remember this, I'm looking at them, that one of the things that happened at CPS all the time was field trips. I can't tell you how many times I ended up having to go listen to the Cincinnati Symphony. I mean, and to me, a dedicated fleet can be more than making sure we have convenience for our athletic folks and our extracurricular. But to your point, we could have all of our kids with the vision testing. We could have dentals. I mean, it's just amazing what we could have. And right now, this week, we have, I don't know, hundreds of our high school students right now going to the Holocaust Center down at Union Terminal. And it's been a Herculean effort for them to schedule that with the buses and all. And there's all kinds of things that could happen if there was convenience to it. So I'm kind of interested in that. I'll wrap up. We don't have the cost for metro here and that's okay. We're not even sure. And I think we have to say to the public, we still have not gotten our records requests or our information that our Transportation Department has requested to even see if what we say is happening is actually what they say is happening. So I do think that we do need to look and figure out how we can help them give us that information. And I also finally think we are on the right track finally, or on the right street. I'm not going to do a bridge, but we're going down the right route, to use that analogy. And I think we're going to know something and we're going to resolve and have a plan from the administration and from board committees and from some community people. I think we're going to be ready to act and know the cost within the, less than eight weeks. And we're going to have to because this cost, whatever this is going to be, is going to impact whatever budget we're putting together. Because you're going to have to come up with millions more dollars for transportation than we're currently spending or that we've spent five years ago. But at least if we do it for the quality of service, I'd spend the dollars, but it means they're not going to be spent on something else. But this is the linchpin for sure. And one last thing to the public, we do not charge our families or our students for transportation. And it was one of the first great acts of equity, I think we did. Because of the superintendent's point, we can't teach them until we get them there. And right now, we're doing a disservice. Thank you. And thanks for the work.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other comments or questions from board members before we move on? I'll share just a thank you again. I had two very quick things and I think it's come up from Vice President Jones and Dr. Moffett, the idea of continuing to negotiate with metro, whether it's around that cost. I have a feeling that they would be, you know, very happy to, happy maybe strong, but very willing to have conversations about it. And I was just going to ask, could we get, continue to get updates on whether negotiations are taking place with metro? Who's doing those? What's the scope of what they're talking about? It may be every board meeting, but every once in a while, just an update on where that is. And then my other question was going to be, when we do get the proposal for the FY23 Plan, could we see the transportation cost per student? And if possible, would be wonderful to see that compared to some other districts? Just, there's so many kids and such a big number. It's helpful to know, is this big, is this small? How do we stack against some others? I just think that's really helpful context. Thank you. Okay. So I think if we are good with the interim superintendent, anything else on transportation? Okay, thank you, Ms. Solano. We really appreciate your hard work. We're going to keep things moving here and move to, I believe, Hearing of the Public. So we are now at the item on the agenda for Hearing of the Public. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful of all listeners. Thank you. Mr. Hoing, can you tell us how many speakers we have this evening?
Yes, we have three speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Sharon Silver. Our second speaker is Tenny Verkamp and then Julie Sellers.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Ms. Silver.
Hi, thank you very much. On metro, I think you actually have some people who are in zone two. Part of Silverton and Kenwood are zone two. I don't know if that needs to be figured into your class. Maybe Chevy it as well. But I really wanted to talk about the health issue. You can say another 200 times that students are, that children are safe in the schools. That doesn't necessarily make it so. I have heard more stories in the past three weeks of kids bringing this home to their families, whereas with Delta, it was usually the opposite direction. But here, kids seem to be bringing it home to their families and unless everybody has been contact traced, you don't know the answer on that. About 30% of people appear to still be able to transmit COVID after the five-day period that's, that the new guidance recommends. So you may have well have people coming back to school who can still transmit. So I would request again that there be another option. I don't think Walnut tolerates people going back and forth within like the three-week period that we need for this to calm down between CDA or homeschooling. CDA doesn't offer all the classes that they have at Walnut. For example, they don't have AP Computer Science A. That's not really an option. I'm not saying you need, I know there were issues with streaming. Just let the kids who are capable of doing so go through Schoology. Let them get their assignments off Schoology and work that way for a couple of weeks. I know it's not the same as being in the classroom and they'll miss some material. This is like a two or three week proposition. This would also, I think, having something like that in place would allow the kids who are out due to COVID but feeling well enough to do so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Our next speaker is Tenny Verkamp, followed by Julie Sellers.
Hi, my name is JR Verkamp, speaking on behalf of Tenny. I just wanted to take the time to say thank you to the board for your leadership by having our students back in school. You really are serving as role models to the CPS community by being proactive in solving problems versus being reactive, living in fear and just waiting for something to happen. I think by solving staffing issues, looking at schools on an individual basis, offering alternative models for those who do not feel safe in the classroom or feel safe getting the vaccination, you're teaching our students to be thoughtful, resilient and develop grit. While it won't be easy, as the rest of the world learns to live with COVID, so must we. Further, I want to thank you for utilizing the experts of Cincinnati Children's Hospital. As a city, we are so lucky to have one of the top children's hospitals in the world right in our backyard. And I think it's important that we continue to lean on the doctors and professionals for advice. And then lastly, I do just want to say thank you to the teachers and all the staff who helped make schools run for their efforts and commitment to our students who rely on you guys day in and day out. You are so important to these kids' lives and for many, what they look forward to every single day. As a former teacher, I understand the demands and required flexibility and I applaud you for all your efforts and what you guys are giving to the kiddos. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Good evening, members of the board. After watching the board's Policy Committee last Friday on January 23rd, I would like to make a couple of remarks and hope that the issue of vaccine or testing requirements can be addressed through a motion from the floor this evening. Some of the board members from that committee did not want to support a policy change for volunteers in our buildings. Instead, they wanted to gather more information and kick the can down the road for at least six more weeks. Our belief is that any adult in the building should provide an up-to-date vaccine card or COVID test to protect our students and employees from COVID spread as much as possible. This should be an easy ask with the recent increases in transmission rates of the latest variant. We should not underestimate our volunteers' commitment to our students and those families who have students within our schools. I'm sure that all of the volunteers will want to do what is best for our students to maintain our safety protocols and support those safety protocols. And we hope that they feel comfortable providing a vaccination card during the sign-in process. And because we would like to see this consistency of the policy throughout the district, and I would hope that you could pass a motion and/or make a recommendation this evening, even if it isn't a policy, that any adult in the building to be vaccinated or tested to enter. I know if I go to the Aaronoff for the ballet, I have to show a vaccine card. If I go to the Aaronoff for Broadway Series, I have to show a vaccination card. Wherever you go, that there is a venue with a lot of people, you have to show your, your cards. So I want to thank you for helping to provide a safe environment for our employees, beginning as soon as possible, because we want to make sure that our schools can remain as safe as possible and remain open in a safe environment. And I would also like to say that, or ask if you could provide directions for our EL families to use the translation features of the Blue Gene meetings. I have not been able to figure out where that is within this broadcast and I think that we need to start hearing from our EL families. But I do believe that it is adamant that all people within our buildings are following the safety protocols and that all safety protocols are here too 100%. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hoing, and thank you, everyone who spoke this evening. We are now moving to the part of the agenda for board matters. We have four items tonight. I think that they're all reasonably swift. I was hoping for the first one, which is the status report on the six-week board priorities. Could we put up that slide from the beginning for just a moment? It has the, it's just a single slide and it lists the five? Okay, great. And do, it's possible that board members also have a printed copy at their seats? Do folks have that? If not, then I think we could just look on the screen. But, you know, we don't need to spend forever here, but I do think something really important is to be as clear as we can about what the most important priorities are for us as a board, to be public about that and then to hold ourselves accountable for reaching some concrete outcomes on those priorities. And so I want to thank everybody for contributing to shaping these together at our Saturday work session. And what you'll notice on the slide is, as you go to the right, there are some columns for the different board meetings we're going to have or committee of the holes that we're going to have between now and the, and the end of that time period. And I thought one thing we could do, it doesn't have to be lengthy, but just provide some update to the public and to each other on whether or not we're seeing movement on the things we said were the most important things for us as a board. And I think tonight, unless I'm missing something, the answer is pretty good news. If we look at the superintendent search, that we're going to be able to announce a set of three or fewer finalists by February 10th, along with a description of how the community will be involved in interviewing those finalists. I want to invite anybody who disagrees with me, but I feel like we are right on track for being able to do that. And so if I had to assign a little color to that cell, I would make it green. Does anybody feel differently about that? And so then if I go to the next one on COVID, that schools are open for in-person learning, sorry, just on number one, truly, I think that's the most important thing happening right now. There are all these other pieces, transportation's important, yes, all these things matter, but having a clear leader for this next chapter of CPS, I think is job one. So on two, that schools are open for in-person learning on the 24th, that is today. And then in partnership with the administration, we continue a school-by-school approach to any future virtual and in-person needs this school year. I think we heard that loud and clear in the presentations that we had earlier tonight. I really do want to invite people to tell me if you disagree, but if I had to give this one a color for this week, I would put it green also. Does anybody feel like we're not doing what we said we'd do on this one? Great. I know that folks are meeting and talking about communications, particularly around our superintendent search. There needn't be any updates on this tonight, but I wanted to create a moment, if people did want to share anything, we certainly can. Otherwise, we can just hit this one next time. So on three, excuse me, on four, for the new board members, I would just invite any of them to continue to ask any questions that I feel like I've been in touch with, with all of you in some form or fashion over the last week. And so my sense is that people are getting what they need, but if, does anybody have a request for something they're not getting, you can also certainly reach out to us individually. And then on this last one, I did want to talk about for just a second. So for board development, this is the idea that by the end of February, we've identified some form of ongoing board governance training that the majority of the board believes will be helpful. I wanted to offer a suggestion for how we could move this forward and I'm not tied to this, but I think we did have some success around the process of finding a search firm for the superintendent search, where we put together an RFP with a pretty clear scope of what we were looking for. We solicited proposals broadly and widely. We then had a smaller number of board members, this was Eve and me, who really went through all of those proposals and then came back to the board with a recommendation on what we thought the best fit would be. And I think that's turned out pretty well. Eve, did you have a different experience with any of that?
No, I think that's, I think, well, the proof will be in the pudding, I guess. In a couple a couple of weeks. But yes, I think the process has been great, and I've been very impressed with the search firm, and the board's been very, very patient with you and me, and so has the Alma folks been patient with you and me. So I think it's been a good process.
And so what I was going to ask tonight was, is there anybody who is interested in working with another board member on putting together an RFP for what would be really helpful for us in board governance training, maybe going through some of those proposals once we get them, working with one of your colleagues on the board to have a recommendation for a governance training group that you think would be a really good fit for us? I have a lot of energy for this, and I'm happy to volunteer, but I think actually getting some different people involved would be really good. And if somebody has energy for this, I wanted to see if anybody was interested in taking this on.
I'm not interested in taking it on, but if you would give us a sense of the time, it's not like, has to be done in the next few weeks, or does it? Or should we wait till we, till we begin it and not make a decision?
Yeah, I think so long as-
It has something to do probably with the superintendent piece, too.
And there may be some time we need to let an RFP be out in the world before we can start going through them, but I think so long as we can show like good faith, effort, and movement on this by the end of February, I think that would still be a big win. Is there anybody who would like to be involved? Mr. Craig, anybody else? Mr. Morosky? Okay, great. So then we can figure out next steps. We got a group that's going to help move this forward. And just for folks watching or listening, my hope is, is that not necessarily for a long time, but at each of our meetings, you hear back from us, here's what we said was most important, here's where we said we wanted to be, here's an update on how we're doing. Any other questions or comments on this before we keep going? Ms. Bolton?
One comment. I'm glad that we're doing this, and I think it helps focus the board's work, and I think it helps make the public hold us accountable. But as a person that's been on the board a very long time, most of the important things that happen on the board or within our district, many times, take years. And I don't want people to get the impression that we can make certain things happen over a period of time, whether it's a, persistence is usually the number one quality. But I'm glad that we're doing this on these sorts of board goals, but making sure there's a counselor in every high school, making sure there's art and music in every high school, or AP at every high school, or making sure that the third grade reading is happening, or the career in college efforts, those usually are years and years to get them not only discussed, but out there and then also implemented. So most things, and it's frustrating, but I don't want anybody to get the impression that things happen that quickly. These things can, but generally, you have to persist and persist for the big stuff. But I like that we're going to keep ourselves in tune and moving forward.
That's good. Thank you. Vice President Jones?
Yes. I'm, I have a question about the scope, what the board is looking for in terms of the scope of item three related to communications. I think when we talked about this, I had a very different understanding about the scope of that work, but looking at it on the agenda, sounds like some things have shifted. And so I'm not really clear what the board is expecting from that committee. Is it, when we talk about communications, well, let me back up a step. It says hearing of the public. My last recollection was that that was assigned on the agenda. It says hearing of the public community engagement. It was assigned to policy committee to look at the policy about hearing of the public in terms of ensuring that protocols was in place?
That's item three on the Board Matters?
Item number three on Board Matters?
That's the one that says, hearing of the public community engagement?
Yeah.
We're just not there yet.
Oh, I thought you asked for questions on other item.
Oh, no, no, I think we'll get there. No, that's-
Sorry.
That's okay. I think we're good on item one and can move to item two, which was the meeting refresh. And that was going to come, I think that was, Ms. Bolton?
Ever so often, whether it's a change in the presidency or a change in a board, which both things have happened, or maybe it's just the new year, sometimes we like to, and I think this is what President Lindy is doing with, for example, these top kind of targets and things to be held accountable for, sometimes it's just good to refresh what we do with our meetings and the order, or find more ways to engage, as I think Dr. Kay mentioned, the finding more ways to involve students in our meetings. Maybe it's the order, maybe there's a consent calendar or something, or consent agenda item that could speed the meetings up, or maybe there's a way to, you know, have other people do the Pledge of Allegiance, or have more appearances, if it is virtual even, of students. Years ago, we didn't have a board meeting without kids in some way, shape, or form. And I think those are the kinds of things we need to be thinking about. So I just thought it would be good for us to talk individually. We don't have to do it tonight, but I think it's always a good chance to see if we can make our meetings more accessible and more meaningful or relevant. Maybe it's, maybe it's heavier topics, although I think we can't find too much heavier than transportation or life and death of a COVID, but sometimes we actually did things with academics and other sorts of things. So I just think it'd be great for us to talk about making it, maybe the community has some ideas, too. So I would hope that as we get closer and closer back to in-person, and we get closer and closer to a more normal new norm, I'd like us to think about redesigning some parts of our meetings. I'd even suggest that even the committee minutes, which I think we've done well on expediting, many of the topics that are in committee actually are probably heavier and more important than some of the stuff we talk about in real board meetings. So I just, it'd be great for the administration and the community and staff to help us figure out how we might make these more accessible and meaningful meetings, if possible.
So that's just for my own clarification, a request for the administration to put some thought into-
And the board members.
Any changes, and an invitation to others, and that we would, we would talk about this again in a couple of weeks? Is that timeline appropriate?
Exactly. I mean, it can just be an assignment to the general population and the administration and the current, past, future. What can we do? We've got this great facility. We've got a great board. We have a fabulous administration. We have the best children in the world. I mean, surely, our teachers can come up with, heck, if nothing else, our performing teachers can come up with something a little bit more, but showcasing kids about much more in the student voice, the community voice, having guests, I don't know. It's time to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Thanks for the invitation. Any questions for Ms. Bolton before we keep moving? Okay, we're now on item three, hearing of the public and community engagement. I think this is coming from Mr. Morosky, and I know we have questions. So we're excited.
Yeah, we are. I got a teaser. So this, that flows perfectly from Ms. Bolton, so thanks for the tee-up. So yes, it was assigned to policy, and yes, we did discuss it. We had a robust discussion about it, and so I'll be asking Ms. Bolton and Dr. Moffett to sort of address their pieces as well. We talked about all sorts of things. President Sellers brought up some of the issues we talked about as well, including the sort of accessibility for, you know, our parents who don't speak English. And, you know, I found out in that meeting, I didn't know this, and I felt bad I didn't know it, in that meeting, that Blue Jeans can help folks who don't speak English play the norm meetings. So there's something new. How can we make that accessible? And so the original ask was that policy determine, policy committee, determine how hearing of the public would go forward now that we have the public back in this space. To, you know, to some folks, and then I'll pause, but I think the framing is important. To some folks, it seems like a strange conversation, like what's the, why is this, why does this even need to be discussed? It just sounds like bureaucrats sitting and talking about things. But it's, the reason it's a unique situation is we've had people plugging in thousands of people because it's more accessible at home, and hearing of the public has been at home, but now we have people in person. And the protocol to speak in person is back on the table, and it's a little different when you're in person versus at home. When the bell goes off at home, it's time to move on. When the bell goes off here, people can still talk, let's be real. And so there is an equity issue there, I think, and I think that's where the assignment was largely born out of. We did not reach consensus in policy. I think we did reach consensus, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Bolton or Dr. Moffett, that we're comfortable with, and I'm going to quote Ms. Bolton, at least for the time being, I mean, it seems like we have to enable both, at both options. There was, I think, consensus on that point, but then there became a larger, more philosophical issue, and Dr. Moffett talked a lot about having a dedicated student part of hearing of the public. So again, reinventing meetings. The reason community engagement was on the backslash there is I felt we were sort of, a lot of the issues we were talking about were largely that, community engagement issues, more so than just standard hearing of the public, i.e., why do only certain people feel comfortable even talking to us, right? So that's why it got put on here. It's kind of an esoteric sort of thing. I think, again, pragmatically, everyone's comfortable with virtual and in-person can speak. So that's where it started. I wanted it on here because y'all's feedback would be important to me as the chair. And if it's okay, President Lindy, I know Ms. Jones has a question, but I do want to see if Dr. Moffett or Ms. Bolton want to add anything to that before we, if you want to.
No, I think that I just wanted to be able to, I brought it up, hearing student voices, because I thought it was super significant. We're talking about being student-centered, to have a dedicated time for students to be able to speak to the board during the hearing of the public and not necessarily have to be mixed in with the general public. So, and I understand that that is part of our community engagement policy, but I thought when we're speaking specifically about hearing of the public during a board meeting, I thought student voice needed to be captured. So that's the reason why I brought that up.
No, I think you all covered it.
Mr. Morosky, you're good. Vice President Jones?
Are we on number three?
Yes, ma'am, number three.
Okay, I think hearing Mr. Morosky helped clarify some things for me, because I was actually aligning this with this. But my question, and I think that I can wait until, remember Weinberg and Dr. Moffett, until we need to talk about the scope of what we're being asked to do and how it possibly fits into that. When I looked at this, it appeared to be so broad, and it scared me a little bit because I did not hear that that's what this group was asking us to do in our board, in our board work session. So I think I will sit back and wait until we have that discussion first, and then I may have questions later.
That sounds great. That sounds great. Mr. Craig?
Yeah, I just, I had kind of two questions, and I think they kind of tie into the previous section about how our meetings are working, but I guess the first question really being this idea of changing how we communicate, or opening up opportunities for folks to communicate, both virtually and in person. Are we thinking about that in that sense of, Dr. Moffett's idea of having student voice be there, separating out times for both students versus the rest of the community, or having students be allowed still within the general communication time of the hearing of the public?
We didn't, I mean, the committee didn't reach any kind of consensus about that. I know Dr. Moffett, like he outlined, was interested in having this dedicated piece. I don't know that the committee sort of as a whole shared that that was necessarily, necessary? Sorry, that was. But, but then the conversation, though, pivoted to how can we make these meetings more accessible or more attractive for students to come in a sort of like bigger sort of sense. But then again, I don't want to speak for Dr. Morosky. I can keep it back to you if you don't mind.
No, I just, I think that what we were tasked to do was to address the hearing of the public portion in the policy committee. And so I think we agree, there should be an on, there should be streaming, and then there should be an in-person option. I suggested let's have a hearing of the public on both of those and give dedicated time for student voices to be prevalent, because I would like to hear from students. I don't, and I also even said, you know, we don't want to hear from the same 10 students from one organization, but we would like to hear what is going on with our students across our district and give them dedicated space to speak. So that's kind of as far as we got, and I just, I just wanted to address that. I even talked about, is it possible to put the ability to have questions answered in the chat, or just put the questions in the chat, and then we can extract, extract those and then answer them at a different time. But it was just a way to engage differently, specifically with hearing student voices included.
So I want to see if I can just summarize real quick where I think we are, and then go to Vice President Jones. Something that most people, I think, would find helpful and good would be to make sure that in hearing of the public going forward, we retain the virtual option, because we've been able to hear from so many more people, and we reinstate our in-person, because there's wonderful value in that, too, and that we should make some special invitations. We ask for the administration's help with this, for student voices. And that I want to, we're not saying there must be six kids at every meeting. I think we are saying we'd like to advertise and encourage students to participate, and it could be either virtually or in person. And then if we were to do those things, it would be a really big step forward in terms of including the community. Is that, is that wrong by anybody, or am I missing something?
I think that's right.
Great. Vice President Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that if there, the option of entering a question or something that you wanted to say into the chat feature has always been an option. Now, probably what didn't occur is that we didn't repeat that frequently so people knew, but it has always been an option for that. But with everything else, I think it's a matter of working out what everybody is saying. I guess my question is, still, number three, the way it's written with hearing of the public, is that still falling under policy committee to look at, or is it something that this new communications group is, okay, that's good. Thank you.
So I think we're good to move forward with this new approach to hearing of the public starting next board meeting. Any concerns from interim superintendent Amat, or things we're not thinking about?
I just want to clarify, we have already opened up for our public in-person, so-
Thank you for clarifying that.
Welcome. So we've done that, I believe, yes, a month ago, but we have fully identified places to sit, so we're social distance. We have materials there, so if you have to sanitize, we have someone at the front desk to let people in.
So basically, what we're doing is re-announcing something that already happened a while ago.
Yes, and then-
Great.
And you are continuing with the hearing of the public virtually as well.
Okay. Good. Thank you, and thank you for clarifying that. Let's keep moving then. And the next one, I think, here is also for Mr. Morosky on the vaccine policy.
That is correct. So the vaccine policy was taken up again in policy committee last Friday. There were two separate issues in the policy that the committee felt would be good to get board input on as we put this back on the agenda in February. So we did not affect the policy one way or another, and I'm going to do them separately if it's okay, so they don't get kind of convoluted. The first is, I think it would help us to know folks have strong opinions one way or another regarding adding language about boosters in the vaccine policy. And if not, then you don't need to say anything, but if you have a strong opinion one way or another, we'd love, I mean, I think it would be helpful for us. Did I frame that okay, policy committee?
Well, we need to clarify that the recommendation- Well, we need to clarify that the recommendation that we, this discussion was around mandating boosters.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, well, I think, yeah, the vaccine requirement and booster requirement as well.
That's a great question. I would be very interested in what the administration thinks.
Can you please directly ask the question? I want to make sure I'm answering the question.
Should, in the administration's opinion, is it prudent to require all staff and co-located partners to get a booster shot of the COVID vaccination?
I don't have a professional opinion on that. What I would do is refer to our medical experts.
Other questions or comments from Mr. Morosky? Or questions you want to ask Mr. Morosky? Mr. Craig?
And in line with your thought there, like, I'm just curious if we know, if we have been tracking at all whether or not staff had been, not only have we been tracking staff had been vaccinated, but whether or not they had been boosted or not? Is that something we've...
Dr. Moffett asked that question.
That was a question that I asked. Can we get that data of how many have been boosted? How many are interested in getting boosted? Because what I suggested was, I don't, I want us to be proactive and not make a decision that could impact our staffing later on. And so I, it's going to take time, but we need to ask the question.
And they've done that. They've since done that since Friday.
Yes, we have done that. And so to date, right now, and we just recently asked the question, I believe today, 622 have been uploaded in our system for being boosted.
Out of how many?
But we just recently asked that question. When did the... Thank you, Ms. Bunty.
Well, Ms. Bunty comes up. I would just like to add for context, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do this, but we did not ask this question about people for the vaccination and got 99.9% compliance. I think that's helpful context to have. I also think it's helpful to know that we do know the booster increases one's ability to stay healthy and not die if they get the COVID virus.
So on the 20th, we put a query to all employees to voluntarily submit booster information. On the 21st, we followed up with a separate email to all employees. We're going to continue that rhythm on a weekly basis to get as many as we possibly can. And as our interim superintendent stated, we have 622 vaccinated or with boosted out of the 4,931 who have received the 2 series or the 1J.
Mr. Craig?
And then just the other thoughts, who, kind of as you all are thinking about it, is also putting together a timeline with regards to thinking about that? Because, again, I know that it's another thing that we'd be asking folks to do that, you know, again, not everybody has done yet. And so I think that's just another aspect of what we can and cannot do, is what timeline makes it more feasible or not for that to be possible.
Other things that would be helpful for you, Mr. Morosky, on this question?
I don't, I don't have any real helpful stuff right now. To be honest, I'm just being perfectly blunt. Like, this has not been super helpful, and that's okay. I don't know if we want to rely on medical experts to come and advise us again at the next policy committee. I haven't gotten a real definitive, anything from anybody. I support it. I'll put that out there. Again, if the goal is to keep schools open so we don't have to close schools, we know, and the doctors told us when they were here the last time, that the booster can increase immunity. So I, and I also think, you know, there is a real sense of urgency to this stuff. It changes every week. Like, we've said tonight multiple times, we don't know what's going to happen next. And like, we keep, next policy meets the end of February. I mean, I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt with this. But like, there is a real sense of urgency about this. And if we want to keep the schools open, we need to do everything we know works. Back to the Swiss cheese model from Dr. Kahn, and we know this works.
I agree with you. I think my proposal would, we need somebody to make a motion for that. It could come now. It could come from the policy committee next time. It could come between now and then. I'm speaking just for myself. Like, I would vote in a heartbeat to support a motion in favor of a booster requirement. My one catch is, I'd want the administration to be supporting it. You know, and not, to me, it's not a question of whether, but a question of, like Mr. Craig was asking, what's the timeline? Why is that the timeline? When could we pull this off well? The moment we have that, that's my vote. And I'm just speaking for myself.
Well, I think Ms. Bolton summed it up well in the policy committee. And, you know, that the ideal, of course, is that it comes with a recommendation from the committee that here is what, is process-wise. So I think, while I'm with you in principle in a lot of ways, again, I like aggressive timelines. But I think it makes most sense that us three come to some consensus on what it looks like and then come, here is what we propose. So again, while it may be frustrating to keep waiting, I'm far more interested in doing it the right way and having the policy committee around it. So, again, while I may not have gotten exactly what I was looking for, I think we can go back. And I don't know if Dr. Moffett or Ms. Bolton have anything to add to that. But, because it's us three that are going to make the recommendation or not. So we are going to get some of the data, which is good, that we had talked about on Friday. So I don't know if there's anything else we need to get between now and then. So I'm kind of look, not to call you out, but I'm calling out the policy committee. Do we need anything else to make us feel better?
I think we were just going to, the reason why we brought it to the full board was for discussion and/or vote to see who would be in favor of it preliminarily or not. So we have, President Lindy said yes, but the discussion was for the board.
And I just have a quick question in regards to if a employee refuses to get that booster. Do you have in mind, you know, what would be the next steps or what would happen next prior to making this decision today if we had to make the decision?
It's already included in the policy. They have to submit a negative COVID test. If they don't do either one of those, then...
With the booster, is what you're saying?
Well, it'd be, it wouldn't matter. If you're already refusing to get the vaccination for whatever reason, you have to submit a negative COVID test, so you just keep doing that.
Right. So if a employee has their vaccinations, which are both shots, according to the CDC, are you saying that if they refuse to take the booster, then they are required to take additional...
I see what you're saying.
Yes.
No, no, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. They have both, but not the booster.
Yes. So that might be something that you might have to consider and have a discussion about.
Yeah. Include that in there. Yeah. Appreciate it.
Okay, any last things? Was there a second part, Mr. Morosky, to what you wanted to talk about?
The second part was regarding, so it's not so much included in the vaccine policy, but requiring people who sign up to be subs to present a vaccination card, which, again, unsurprisingly, I'm adamantly in support of. We're asking all our co-located partners and everyone else...
Subs or volunteers?
Volunteers. Subs have to be vaccinated. So everybody has to be vaccinated or submit the negative COVID test. So what came up in policy, and I don't know if it necessarily, at least how it ended in policy committee, was not that it would necessarily need to be encompassed in the policy, but that to be a volunteer, there's already a certain set of criteria you have to do to become a volunteer at CPS. You can't just walk in our buildings. And included in that process was presentation of a vaccination card to get your volunteer badge. And so it came out of committee that it would be good to know what everybody else up here thought. That I am prepared to move tonight, that we require it.
I think that's helpful. Thanks. Does it, folks have a perspective on whether or not to require volunteers to show a vaccination card or a negative COVID test? Any board members have comments? Ms. Bolton?
Would only suggest what said that, I think, in committee. I mean, in the same week, we're desperately trying to stay open and needing more volunteers to help us do that, to put another restriction or stipulation on volunteers. This is kind of counterintuitive. I mean, I think it just complicates it. Were we even discussed in the committee, you know, what about parents? I mean, if, so I just think it's, I think we need to talk. It took us six months to get the professional staff signed off on doing this. I just think we better not rush, even though time is of the essence, to now put the additional responsibility, additional stipulation on our parents and our volunteers. But I think we have to have a discussion. I'm glad the chair brought it up.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Other comments? Vice President Jones?
I think if I, if it were put before the board to vote on tonight, I would be hesitant. Not that I don't support it, but I guess I'm thinking, I'm thinking more about the process because I would look for the policy committee to work through everything that you all have brought here and come up with recommendations for us to further discuss if we need to, including information if we need to talk to an expert about it or not. But I, so it feels a little bit like the cart before the horse. But everything that Mr. Morosky is saying makes perfect sense to me, except I don't know if it's been sort of vetted through policy committee, if there's solid recommendations, the administration is there, they can add to that conversation. And there could be some firm recommendations that come out of the committee to the full board to consider for a vote that night, if that's feasible. I don't know if I'm making sense, but it just feels a little awkward to me that we're having the conversation, you know. So I wouldn't be able to vote today. I just don't feel like we're there yet. I think there needs to be more conversation in policy committee to work through some of these questions that have come up.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. We've heard from two others. Mr. Craig?
So I think I would, I would, again, if we're having it today, I would want, only one caveat added in, is that it leaves time for folks to complete the vaccination process. So, you know, if that's a six-week window in which, at this date and time, this is when the policy goes into effect, I think that gives a little bit more time and space for folks to, who haven't been vaccinated, to go get vaccinated. But in lieu of that, you know, again, really looking at folks who are volunteering, especially folks who are volunteering on a regular basis or will be in the classrooms on a regular basis, to be either vaccinated and/or have negative COVID tests within a period of time, short period of time, of their coming into the school, I think is reasonable. You know, again, I think it's just a question of logistics at times for me. And so depending on what that would look like, would really shape my answer long-term.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Anybody we've not heard from who would like to share a perspective?
I would say that I would agree as well in terms of, for volunteers, really looking into making sure that they either have that negative COVID test or having that vaccination. So I would be interested to hear a little bit more about that.
Dr. Moffett?
My concern, and I shared this in the policy committee, I'm not an anti-vaxxer at all, but I think that what, what could potentially happen, and I brought this up to their person, Morosky, what we're saying in essence is that people can't be in the building unless they provide us with a vaccine card. And so my concern was, hey, what about parent conferences? And the response was, well, no, they can't come to parent conferences if they don't have a vaccine card. And I'm a little concerned with what that's telling our community when the majority of our students are African-American, and that's a population that you, that has been admitted to not, not have, being as vaccinated as we need them to be. So what we're saying ultimately is that this population cannot come in our buildings if they do not produce a vaccine card. And I know that that sounds a little far-fetched, but I don't want to place in motion things that could ultimately get there. What I would love to see is more attendance and support for the clinics that we currently have, get in, at the same time that we're getting the messaging out to parents and saying, hey, you know, this, this might be coming. We really need you to be vaccinated for these reasons. But I just don't think, I'm not certain as to what message that is sending to our public that we don't want you in our buildings, you're not vaccinated. I understand the safety of it. I completely get it. But I just am a little concerned with the, with what message we're sending to people who could vote for our levies, for people who could vote to support us and volunteer.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. I don't think I've shared my perspective yet. I'll just get it out there and then, I think, maybe see if, do we want to, I think we will have heard from everybody. Do we want to hear again from everybody? Or does somebody want to make a motion? But for my part, this seems pretty reasonable to me, that we would ask people who volunteer in schools to show either that they're vaccinated or that they have a negative COVID test. Does not seem, I might be in the minority on that, but doesn't seem too far-fetched for me. The thing I really care about is the perspective of the administration. And like, I don't know, for example, does that mean that more schools would have to go virtual? If so, how many? Like, are there other things we're not thinking about? So if there were some reassurance that this wouldn't cause some problems I'm not thinking of, seems super reasonable. Ms. Wunder?
I just need clarification. I heard Dr. Moffett say that we are not allowing parents to come in for parent conferences if they're not vaccinated. Did I hear that correctly? I just want clarification.
No, I was saying that if we, if we, no, that is not currently what we're saying.
Okay.
But if we say that ultimately what we talked about in the policy committee meeting is that no one in our buildings that is not vaccinated and/or boosted eventually, what that could happen.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I heard correctly.
Yes, when you say that, then no one in our buildings can come in. And that would include parents or any, I'm assuming contractors, et cetera. And what messaging is that sending? So that was my concern. I think that it should happen, but I just am a little nervous without, with doing that.
Thank you for that clarification.
So I think, just given the hour and I think the conversation we've had so far, we could certainly talk more about it. Does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Morosky?
I'm happy to make the motion, but I don't know if we're, or we're completely finished talking. I don't know if Ms. Bolton said anything about it yet.
Well, I think we'll have discussion after there's a motion and a second. Like, if there, if there's somebody who wants to put a motion on the floor, I think we should go through the process.
So if, you know, the way, the way I would word it, I would move that anyone who wants to volunteer in Cincinnati Public Schools needs to show proof of vaccination to get a volunteer badge to work in our schools or a negative COVID test weekly, beginning with the first day that they go and apply for their badge.
So we have a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
A second.
Do we have a motion and we have a second? Is there any discussion?
I just want to say something.
Yeah, Mr. Morosky?
The only thing I would add is I respect all of the comments that have been made. I have a very difficult time hearing that we don't want to go remote anymore and are unwilling, for whatever reason, to take the steps that we know will help us not go remote anymore. No matter what decision we make, we're going to upset people. We've gotten used to that over the past couple of years. And if you're not used to it, you should probably start getting used to it, and that's what's going to happen. Now, we know the vaccination is the best defense we have against this thing. We know that out of all the things we can do in mitigation strategies, it has the best chance to help us keep our doors open, which I would prefer to do as well. And, you know, I said in policy committee, and I'll say it here, I find it extraordinarily disrespectful to our staff, who we've mandated to get this vaccination, who have, who want to be in school. And then we're saying, well, you can go home, but we're going to let unvaccinated people in. To me, that sends a strange message. So if we want to keep the schools open, I think we should do everything we know can help. And that's where this comes from. It doesn't come from any other place. And I think, you know, to quote Mr. Lindy, I think it's fairly reasonable. So I'll just end with that.
Thanks. I think Ms. Bolton may have had one, and then we'll go to Vice President Jones.
I will, on this motion at this time, I would vote no for a couple of reasons. One, it has not gone through the vetting. We haven't heard from the administration. We don't have the data that was requested. And we haven't really talked about this as long as, or even close to initiating it as we did with employees. I do think, Mr. Morosky, that parents are, and volunteers are different than employees. And I, I just know, after all these years, we've spent so many times in ways of keeping people out of our buildings that I just don't want to send that message now without the proper vetting. without the proper vetting, the proper discussion, and us coming back with a recommendation in narrowly defined or not narrowly defined or broadly defined. I hoped all we would get tonight is whether or not there was interest in Policy Committee pursuing this. There is interest in pursuing it. Let the Policy Committee do the work that committees are supposed to do. Don't do something from the floor that gives the impression that this was some sort of casual effort. This is not a casual decision.
Right.
So I would be voting no. I mean, ultimately, I'll probably vote yes, but right now I just think it's inappropriate messaging.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Vice President Jones?
I am in 100% agreement with Ms. Bolton. I feel like the discussion that we are having tonight should have been vetted in Policy Committee. Have Policy Committee come with recommendations. Because in Policy Committee, that's where the work of the board, all of these issues and questions and scenarios that are coming up have to go through that committee for consideration. Staff is right there. So all of these questions that are coming up have to be vetted. Come to the full board with a recommendation, and we can have discussion. If I had to vote on it tonight, which a motion is on the floor, I would also vote no. And it's not necessarily that I don't support it. I don't understand what we're voting on. It hasn't been clearly defined enough for me. What are the implications? What if we do Scenario A? What are the implications? What if we do it this way? I don't know. I think that it's policy's role to do that. So we're having the discussion before, we're trying to make a decision before it's been vetted in the committee.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. I'd like to use my turn here just to ask the interim superintendent, do you have a perspective on whether this is a totally fine idea, a terrible idea, or just not sure yet?
I'm in agreement with the clear process. And the board writes policy. And once that decision is made, administration will get together and make sure we implement the policy.
I just want to make sure I'm here. What I'm not hearing you say is there's a reason you're concerned about this. I had a double negative. That's a terrible way to do that. I apologize. I hear you saying you don't have any concerns with the proposal that the administration will implement whatever the board passes.
I think to make a decision without further discussion, further information, and in haste can lead to unexpected consequences. So what I'm saying is more time for discussion.
I'm so glad we clarified. Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you. So I think just for me, I think, and given that, I would say no tonight, but I am very open to this going forward. Anybody not speak on the motion yet who wants to have something for discussion? Sorry, I asked, we had a motion, we had a second. We're in discussion. I wanted to make sure that every board member who wanted to say something or ask a question during discussion had a chance to do that. And I was just checking to see if there's anybody who didn't share or ask who'd like to.
I just wanted to say that that was my first policy meeting. It was very informative having Mike and Ms. Murawski and Ms. Bolton there. I think that it just needs more discussion. And I completely agree with you, Mike. I do not ever want to be disrespectful to the teachers who we asked to get vaccinated. That is never my intent. I just wanted to go through the process and get the proper vetting that it needs in order to be clear and concise so that it is something that we can all stand behind. So I want that to be very clear that I'm not, I'm always supporting our faculty and staff and to keep our buildings safe.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. I think we can either do a roll call. Yeah, I think we do a roll call on the motion.
Ms. Bolton?
No.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Dr. Moffett?
No.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
No.
President Lindy?
No.
Okay, so I think that takes care of board matters. And we're going to keep moving. Next thing we have on the agenda are some resolutions. Ms. Bolton, would you present the first resolution, please?
First resolution tonight, all of these deal with our wonderful Community Audit Committee. It's a resolution reappointing Audit Committee members. And the members that we are reappointing are David Foote and Thomas Heldman. I submit for approval and ask people to be very appreciative that we have such a fantastic Audit Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Treasury Ragnar, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. We have a next resolution from Ms. Bolton about the Audit Committee.
Thank you very much. And again, we're appreciative to this committee. A resolution reappointing Audit Committee Chair and Vice Chair, Chair Thomas Heldman and Vice Chair Daniel Wholehouse. I submit for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Treasury Ragnar?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Three for three, Ms. Bolton, our last resolution.
Proudly and happily introduce this resolution appointing Audit Committee member new to the committee, Paul Kitzmiller, which will also allow there be some kind of representation from Mrs. Bates for about the 22nd year. I submit for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Treasury Ragnar?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, so we are now on the Superintendent of Schools. Do we have a report from the interim superintendent this evening?
Yes. Pull up the presentation, please. I would like to kick off the presentation by congratulations to Aaron Parker, teacher at Aiken High School. He was recently selected for the WKRCTV Educator of the Week Award. His fellow teacher, Kendra Alexander, nominated him for his commitment to our students. Congratulations, Mr. Parker. Black music of America. So I'm not sure if everyone realized this year we have offered ban across the district to all of our fourth-grade students. We are enhancing our curriculum to introduce a fourth-grade music curriculum that is inspired for students for music created by black musicians in America. They will study the importance of black musicians, the contributions, and listen and analyze jazz, rhythm and blues, ragtime, soul, and hip-hop. So guest artists will visit the classrooms and perform. Next slide, please. I would like to remind the community that the COVID-19 Vaccine and Booster Clinic is open. Our future dates, February 3rd and February 24th on the West Side, 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Reece Price. Walk-ins are welcome. We are having our next Beyond the Tassel series. It's an excellent way to get information around college. And this week's presentation is to support students whose residency in Ohio and/or the United States may require additional documentation to access higher education. That will take place January 25th on Facebook at 2 p.m. We have the Beyond the Game Speaker Series on Facebook, January 31st, 6:00 to 7:30. It's around the new changes regarding NCAA, the use of high school and college athletes' names, images, and likeness. So please plug on into our Facebook segment on January 31st. And then lastly, just to remind some upcoming dates for school closure, we have Conference Day on February 7th. There will be no students on that day. And February 21st, an observance of President's Day. No school. That concludes my superintendent's report, and I submit the written report for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Interim Superintendent Amat, is there a motion to approve the superintendent's report?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? This is, by the way, I should be clear, there's a revised report. Has anybody not had a chance to see the revised report?
Oh, the superintendent.
Superintendent, yeah. Wonderful. Then any discussion? Treasury Ragnar?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes, except Recommendation 1C.
I'm sorry, were you abstaining or voting no on that?
Abstaining.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
They'll move.
Is there a second? Now, under discussion, I do think there are some changes that we need to make here. Treasury Ragnar?
Yes, I'm sorry, we have to make a tiny change to Page 10, Item 6, under Corrections. The quantity under ESER should be 84 instead of 82 units. And then the total quantity under the purpose statement should be 298. A revision of a revision and a typo, so I apologize.
So this is, I think, just like a cleanup, not a substantive change of any kind.
No, the dollar value is right. It's just we forgot to update the quantities.
Any questions or concerns? Any other discussion? Okay, Treasury Ragnar? Just kidding. Ms. Bolton?
Just kidding.
Yes.
I have a question. I have a couple of questions, but the one that I'm going to ask, it has to deal with the transportation RFP. And we heard it referenced before. There was an additional vendor that's been, and two additional vendors that we have not used before. And then there's, what, four or so that we have used? And this is only about yellow bus and vans? This has nothing to do with metro? Okay. My question is, I have great concern about all of these. I'm going to ask, maybe I'm wrong. Are all of these with the six or so different vendors, are they all for five years?
He's waving her head yes.
Considering that we're not sure what we're doing yet, I mean, I have some discomfort about signing off for all of the contracts for five years rather than a three-year with the hope of renewal. I know one of the reasons we do longer terms is that supposedly it makes the cost less great. But we're committing to five years to these vendors, and we don't necessarily know totally what our plan is or how it might be adjusted or...
So historically, that's what we've done, is five years. So right now, we're just asking for approval that we can conduct business with them. But as far as like the total dollar amounts that we want to assign for each vendor, we'd come back to you and ask you for approval for that. So they've all given us their prices, depending what type of vehicle it is, and we have to look at what routes we still need. We need fill. And then once we determine which one is the most cost-effective way to go, which routes we should assign to the vendors, then we would come back to the board with a recommendation for this is how much money we want to give to Vendor A, this is how much you want to give to Vendor B for your approval.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. So...
That sounds great, by the way.
Historically, it's been five years, the RFPs. So what we're doing now, we're just asking for your approval to conduct business with them. But as far as like the amount we want to provide, offer to each vendor, we have to wait until after the optimization study. And then we look at how much they want to charge us for each type of vehicle and what type of vehicle we need for those routes. And then we'll be prudent with how we assign those routes so that it's the least impactful on the budget, if such a thing. And so then we would come back to the board and say, for Vendor A, we'd like to assign these many routes, and this is how much it would cost. And then we would ask your approval at that time for them. So right now, we're just asking for approval that we can go ahead and let them know that we're interested in doing business with them.
And I appreciate that. And I see here it says authorized to enter a five-year contract. And then above it, it says with each vendor to determine a final cost. But it doesn't sound like we're negotiating the years. It sounds like we're negotiating the money and the service but not negotiating how many years. We're signing a contract with all of these people, all of these vendors that would last five years.
Yeah, but within the contract language, we can take routes away from them if we find that their performance is subpar. We have the right to be able to do that. Dan, do you have any additional information? So this was historically what has been done.
Yeah, and I understand and I appreciate that. It's just historically, things haven't gone well. So I mean, I don't want to cite history.
This is not approving contracts with those vendors. We do not yet have contracts with them. This is approving that they were successful in the RFP, and then we would negotiate contracts with them. That answer your question, so.
Yes, but they're looking for five years. Do you not want us, do you want us to?
We can't hear, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so the way it was proposed, it would be for a five-year contract. But if you'd like us to go back to the drawing board on that?
I don't want to go drawing board or anything. I mean, I just don't like five-year contracts. But the lawyer is saying this isn't a contract. When here, it's talking about a contract.
Can I just make sure? I just want to ask a direct question to Dan. This is approval to sit at the table with them, but in the written contract, can we negotiate terms of the contract?
Yeah, even for our longer-term contracts, we generally negotiate year-to-year. They have to be renewed each year. The board has to authorize funds each year. And we will continue that with respect to the... The Transportation Department has just undertaken an RFP process to essentially review the credentials of potential vendors for the next five years, is, I think, my best way of describing what the Transportation Department is asking for your approval this evening.
In this paper, are these contracts or not contracts?
We have not negotiated contracts with the vendors at this point. They have simply responded to our RFP process.
Got that part.
That's it. That's it.
And it says, we'll negotiate with each vendor to determine final cost, but then it also says authorized to enter into a five-year contract per RFP contract terms.
Yes, I, that, we are requesting the board's authorization to move forward with that contract negotiation.
And the contract negotiations is stipulated on five years?
They have in previous years. There are also, as I said, the board authorizes each year the funds for those vendors. And again, our longer-term contracts are generally negotiated at renewable each.
I think what I would propose, this is, it may be that Member Bolton chooses to vote against this, or chooses to abstain from this, but I think we should have maybe 30 more seconds for questions, and then I think we should see if there are other items for discussion and take a vote. Anything else from Ms. Bolton?
No, I just want to know if there's, we're committing to a five-year contract with all of these vendors. That's what this sort of says.
Connie or Dan, is there a response to that one?
Well, Member E. Bolton, if it's okay, I'd like to go back and just do some, just check what the contracts look like prior to this RFP. It was, the last contract we are in was a five-year contract. So...
I would appreciate, and this is no reflection on you or the superintendent or the department, I just, it said that, and I'm worried about a lengthy contract with new vendors, and I'm sure it's going to be wonderful, but I don't want to commit tonight to this.
So is the administration changing its recommendation?
Are you asking us to withdraw the item?
No, I, I thought that's what you were doing. I'm definitely not asking. I was just, I was checking to make sure I followed what you had said, Connie, and...
So I, I'm not asking to withdraw, but the other thing is, what I don't, I mean, that's the way it's been in the past, but if you don't think that's the right way, then we can...
I think, let's hear if there's, Vice President Jones have a question?
I'm totally confused. So what I'm hearing is, it's a standard contract, it's a standard timeframe for the contract of five years. That's standard, that's how we've been doing it. But the question I think Ms. Bolton is posing is, why are we doing five years? What if during, I guess I'm asking, is it possible to have something in there that says it's a year-to-year agreement up to five years when we renegotiate? Is there something that says, if things don't work out, we're not obligated to you for five years? Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? That, I'm confused about the five-year term. Is it, if we don't like the service, we're still obligated to pay up to, or have them for up to five years?
No, we can always take routes away from them.
Let me just clarify, just, I like to be very direct, and please correct me if I'm wrong. There is an RFP, and the RFP is set five years. So, five years. What I'm hearing legal counsel say is that we can do whatever we like from year to year when we write up the actual contract, but every five years, we go through this process. What I hear the board members asking question about is, do we have to commit to the five years? Can we commit to a shorter term in the RFP process? Can we do three years?
We can negotiate whatever, yeah. My understanding is the RFP was written to suggest, yes, but that, there is no contract that's been written with these companies.
So every year, we go back to the table with our vendors?
They bid on, or they provided an RFP, a response to the RFP, that would, you know, I believe expecting that there would be a five-year commitment. But if the board isn't prepared to approve that long of a commitment, then that's, that's possible, too. It is true that all of our contracts, again, are written on year-to-year board appropriation. So there is the ability for us to effectively cancel a contract, you know, midterm, and we have done that.
So let's do this. I mean, I think we should find out, I'm not saying there should or shouldn't be, but is there any request from the administration to change what's in the current revised treasurer's report?
No. Based on what legal counsel is saying, if we can negotiate year-to-year and hold vendors accountable year-to-year, so if the service is not up to our standards, we can correct. That's, that's my direct question. That is the concern overall. That's the thinking behind that question. So if the service is not what we want after the year, can we...
Yes, we have the ability to.
So we have a, we have a motion, it's been seconded, we've had discussion. Are there any discussion topics other than the one we've been talking about? Then can we do a roll call, please?
Bolton? Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
No.
Mark my words.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes.
Okay, so we are almost to the end. Team, thank you for bearing with us here. We have any inquiries or updates? Mr. Morosky?
A non-controversial update. I, as your appointee, thank you again for my appointment to the Cincinnati Rec Commission Board. We had a great meeting, but I just wanted to report out that the report from the CRC Centers where our students were was great, and the REC Center staff has committed to wanting to continue to work with us to figure out how in the future, in the off-chance, fingers crossed, we never have to do this again, we have to go remote, how we can continue to have a robust partnership with the REC Centers as places for our kids to go. So it was a great meeting. Thanks again for the appointment. Do my best to not let you all down.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any others, or are there any assignments?
Assignment.
Vice President Jones?
Yes, I'd like to, earlier to this evening, we talked about the metro situation, the costs of the passes, things like that. I would like to assign to administration to put on their radar for future discussion with Metro Sorda around two things. One is negotiate, possible negotiation of decreased costs for the pass, and based on what Dr. Kay said, any potential opportunity for shared options. I think that the collaboration probably needs to align well with what Ms. Bolton was talking about in terms of a plan, a formal plan, so that, so the timing of that is to your discretion when it seems like a good time to do that. Based on where, when that plan is developed, I would ask that that assignment be considered.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Other assignments, some Mr. Morosky, and then Ms. Bolton?
To the, Vice President Jones, as chair of Student Achievement Committee, the Ascend Program at Bond Hill Academy, it's been working with the math students, I would ask humbly that they be allowed to present to the Student Achievement Committee in January, possible, but February certainly, on the good work that they've been doing there and their plans for the future.
Thank you, Ms. Morosky. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, along the lines of what Vice President Jones mentioned, I think one of the first steps should be the administration writing a clear and definitive narrative, factual narrative that we could share with members of city council, members of the county commission, and the Sorda Board as to what the situation has been historically with Metro, what happened during the summer, what has happened since the summer, so that we can at least have some clear, united voice of what the history has been over these many months. And I think with that, there's a lot of education that needs to go on with ourselves, if you will, and also city council members who are new particularly, and the commission, and the Sorda Board. And I do think to Vice President Jones's point, I do think that the administration should, could continue to figure these things out from a standpoint of legal action as well as negotiations, but I do think it behooves us to, with the good work that the Transportation Department's doing, to come up with a plan that involves Metro that will be seen as us being reasonable and asking them to be reasonable. Currently, they are not. They refuse to negotiate with us, and it's a problem for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any other last assignments? Okay, having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.